This must be interesting reading. I just had to get some weight out of my...
Oh, yeah.
You met him in the past.
Oh, you have a totally new face?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. He is a physician here in Uganda. His brother is a doctor in Uganda. And he's a little bit different.
Beautiful color.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is, uh, the January fourteenth, uh, committee of the whole Southfield State Council meeting. I'm calling the meeting for order. And thank you for calling the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Lance? Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Fitts, yes?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
You have seven members.
Um, we're gonna, uh, jump right into our agenda with, um, the first three items are involving the police department, so we would like to, um, Chief Hoffman?
Yes.
Would come to the front of the room and, um, we'll, uh, try to move these right along. The first one is an annual event, so I think we are all familiar with the Edward Byrne Memorial Assistant Grant.
Yes.
So, uh, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, well, thank you, Council President, and as council members and members of the public. Um, we have, uh, three items from the police department. The first is a grant, um, that is, uh, is an annual grant that we have, and I have Sergeant Bassett, who will cover the details of that, uh, this particular project.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. With authorization of counsel, the police department has been awarded the 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial JAG. The police department is requesting authorization to purchase the Live Fire Judgment Training System. The system will allow officers to train with their department-issued weapons, to include all firearms, as well as their tasers. The Live Fire Judgment Training is a portable system that includes over two hundred different scenarios. The system projects the scenarios onto a screen for the officers to view. They will then have to make the decision as to what level of force is appropriate, and if and when to deploy that weapon. The system will improve the safety and training of our officers, therefore increasing the police department's ability to provide for the safety of the public. The system costs forty-three thousand dollars. Thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars will be paid through the twenty-twelve JAG award, with the remaining seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars from the twenty-eleven JAG award. This grant requires no matching funds. Thank you.
Any, um, comments?
What's unique about this company that it's only better?
Uh, we placed it out, and it was, uh, actually sent out to over twenty different companies. They were the only ones who responded.
And they all do primarily the same thing?
They, I mean, they, they do a lot of different training equipment, but like I said, this is the only response we got in regards to this equipment. The, what, what was somewhat unique is that we requested that officers are actually able to use their duty weapons. What traditional systems have is some sort of a device that they provide, so you use some sort of a, not to say, um, uh, some sort of replica gun. Uh, what we wanted was that our officers could actually use whatever issue, weapon they're issued, being the most realistic possible for the officers.
Yeah, um, in here, in the recommendation, or in the resolution, it says that, uh, the department is, purchasing department will arrange for the disposal of the equipment being replaced in a manner most advantageous to the city. My question is, will this, whatever money that we get from that, will it go back into the police budget, or will it go into the general budget?
Well, in this case, it goes in the police budget, because they, they got the grant.
Okay.
But it's not going to be that substantial, um, I don't believe, because of what we have there, uh, will just have some salvage value.
Okay, a lot of times, um, people can tear it down and find components that they can use, um, so, um, I just wanna make sure that it goes back into the police budget, so that, uh, they'll, they can buy some other stuff, maybe like trigger locks or something that , uh, we can distribute to the share but like, especially with, uh, things that have been going on recently.
Mr. Lance?
Yes, uh, can somebody tell me, uh, how they will dispose of the, uh, the products that they take from us?
Mr. Lance?
Where will they dispose it?
Because of the current system?
Yeah. I, what, in, in working with purchasing, we'll make sure that, you know, we'll, we'll work with, uh, purchasing to see where the appropriate measure is, and the, uh, what puts the, uh, city in the best position will be done. That, the, the exact disposal has not been determined as of yet.
Well, will we know what the exact proposal is, and when the right time arrives? The reason I'm asking, when we, when, uh, Chief Thomas was here, and we changed our gun system, we had them in the nine millimeter blocks at the time, and we changed to seventy-five millimeter, is that right, at the time, or?
No, we, we went to, um, yeah, we, not nine millimeters, we put nine millimeters.
Yeah, the nine, yeah. And you got new ones.
Correct.
Now, he went downtown to a dealer, and he turned in the guns there, which ended up on the street. That's why I asked the question.
Through the chair, uh, the purchasing department has responsibility for salvage, uh, materials, so, um, this council, uh, should help us out.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ma'am, Council President.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Scott. Uh, yes, what I typically do is advertise, uh, for the disposal of any of the city's property. It can be, uh, something as detailed as posting it to the website with, uh, pretty much the way we do our formal purchases, with a dedicated opening and that sort of thing, in those instances, we take the high bidder. Uh, if it is something that is less worth, less than ten thousand dollars, uh, it would be a less formal process, and it would still be open and transparent. We would notify the appropriate people, run an ad in the newspaper, contact other, uh, law enforcement agencies in this case.
Well, you only half answered me, but I won't go any further. I'm not satisfied with that.
Okay, how can I?
Well, I don't know now, I'll have to find out. But I know from past performance, where they cannot perform.
I will say that weapons are handled differently, but what we're talking about now is not...
Do you dispose them locally?
It could be. We do advertise...
No, I'd rather not, I'd rather not dispose any...
These are not weapons.
Well, I was gonna say, these are not weapons, it's a, it's a training tool.
All right. Okay.
Just one more question, what purchases did we make last year with the JAG fund?
The twenty-eleven award?
Yes.
We're actually still in the process, obviously, like I said, part of the funds will be used, uh, the seven thousand, um, seven thousand dollars, seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars will be used for this. The, uh, other amount, and I apologize, if I get the actual forty-three thousand dollars, is being used for ballistic helmets and vests for the officers, that'll actually be put into the vehicle. So that, that's what that award was used for.
For last year?
Yes, the twenty-eleven, yeah.
Very good. And you've got plans, since we receive the funding every year, you've got plans anticipated for...
Yes, yeah.
Anyone else? Um, this item will advance to the consent agenda at our seven o'clock meeting. If there's no objection, uh, to that, then, uh, we'll, uh, move on to item number two. Um, Chief, authorization to purchase and install in-car video cameras?
Yes, um, item number two is a replacement for our in-car video cameras, and we are replacing all of the in-car video cameras in all of our market show vehicles, and Deputy Chief Tinsman is leading that project, and he'll explain the details of that program.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. Uh, today, I'm here to, uh, seek replacement of the current, excuse me, system used for recording the in-car video and audio. The current system was purchased between two thousand and five and two thousand and seven. The current system is older DVD technology, uh, which has become obsolete, and is fully depreciated, and all warranties have expired. Uh, the system is continuous, uh, needs continuous repairs, uh, and maintenance. Out of the current forty-six units that we have in, uh, service, approximately fifty percent of them require, uh, regular maintenance, and a few of them, uh, need complete replacements. Uh, between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve, we spent nearly twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for repairs, and we expect this to increase. The, uh, excuse me, the in-car cameras, uh, um, have a, uh, positive public safety, uh, aspect through the proper, uh, collection of evidence, and it is also a risk management tool. They are man, mandatory, uh, police equipment in today's law enforcement society. Uh, we are seeking a proposed system that has seven twenty P digital, uh, color video for supreme video evidence, a sixty-eight degree field of view, uh, line of sight camera, infrared colored rear camera with a microphone each vehicle, setup, testing, and training. It also has a three-year warranty, a wireless transfer video evidence from patrol car to , uh, police station, and a recording system. Uh, we believe that this would enhance public safety by providing the best possible evidence, and, um, we also believe that it lowers our risk, uh, management focus by reducing the potential liability through documenting police officers' interactions with the public. We propose to seek forty-six units, excuse me, from Watch Guard of Allen, Texas, with, out of revolving fund, and it would be purchased through an Oakland County bid of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety dollars. Also, we'd like to contract with Synergy Wireless Products of Troy, Michigan, to remove the current system and install a new system through competitive bidding process, which are valued at thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. The total project cost would be two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, which would be, uh, recommended to be obtained from the revolving equipment fund six-six-six dash seventeen-eleven.
Uh, Mr. Moss?
Yeah, uh, just how long, uh, do these systems typically last, or?
That's the interesting, it is tech, technology.
Yeah.
So, we, we are about at the breaking point, in fact, we are.
Okay.
Because of the repair process we've been going, going through. We're at a point now where just the repairs themselves are coming cost prohibitive, because now we start replacing the system.
Part of the upgrade includes the fact that might need less repairs, or you don't know until it's implemented?
We believe it, it will need less repairs, because it also has a three-year warranty for software and, uh, product.
Okay.
For the hardware.
Okay. And, uh, similar to the last item, you know, we'll, we'll figure out what the best use of the old equipment is?
Exactly, and we'll work with purchasing, purchasing department.
Okay.
Anyone else? Uh, seeing nothing, uh, no concerns, and this also, uh, this item will move, uh, to the seven PM agenda, uh, for approval. All right, we're two for two.
Right.
Chief, uh, item number three.
Okay, the last item is a request to enter into an agreement with the Southfield Public Schools for a third school liaison officer. And, right now, we have two high school liaison officers assigned to our schools, and they are assigned full-time. Um, the officers have been in the schools for thirty-seven years. They assist school staff in maintaining a safe environment for our students and our visitors. They educate, counsel, and when appropriate, they handle matters in a way to help our students to avoid the criminal justice system. This proposed agreement will place a school liaison officer in the Southfield Regional Academic Campus, also known as SREC, which is an alternative educational facility within the Southfield Public Schools. The officer will be assigned full-time. The police department and the schools will share the cost of the officer, each responsible for fifty percent of the officer's salary and benefits. The officer will be assigned from existing personnel. This will result in cost savings of approximately, of, of, up to seventy thousand dollars a year annually for the city of Southfield. This is an excellent example of public service entities sharing resources during times of stressed budgets, in ways that are mutually beneficial to both organizations. This relationship will strengthen the relationship with the schools, and it will contribute to a safer school environment for our children. It's important that we seize every opportunity that, that we can to engage the youth in this community. We need to build a positive relationship with our youth, because one day, these students will be homeowners, they'll have their own children in the city, they'll settle here, they'll be doctors, lawyers, teachers, business owners. And, once they reach that stage, it's important that they are comfortable reaching out to the police department, so that we can leverage each, each other's talents to maintain and enhance the safety and security in this city. I know the value of this program, because eighteen years ago, I was a liaison officer. And I see the benefits of this program, how now, those students eighteen years ago are comfortable reaching out to the police department. They're comfortable joining us in our community policing campaign, because we can't do it alone, especially during the next five to ten years. I see this as an investment in our community policing philosophy, and the community relations that we have in our city. So, thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
The chief, um, the thing that has happened in Newtown, Connecticut, are we coming up with these schools, schools for some kind of a plan to safeguard all our Southfield schools? Or is there something that works towards that, to, whether it be a person in there or, or some plan and a device for each school?
Absolutely, Councilman, for Cassidy. In, in fact, our relationship with the schools, with this school liaison officer program, made it easier for us to connect with our schools when we have tragedies or anything else, and to even forecast different things that may happen. The superintendent, Dr. Cooks Robinson, and I connected within hours after the, the tragedy in Connecticut, and we had a, we had a plan in place to protect our children. We are, we have a plan in place because of things change, you know, the environment changes, technology changes, um, the, you know, the way our bad people in this commu, in, in society think changes. So, we have a continuous plan to address these things, and we're working very closely with, with Dr. Cooks Robinson and her staff in the school, to make sure that we're, that we're on the forefront of these things, to make sure that we keep our children safe as things change in, in, in society.
A liaison officer at Southfield, uh, yeah, Southfield Lakefront School, how does that work with, uh, the liaison officer working in the city of, of Lakefront, as opposed to having a, a Southfield, uh, school in another city, I guess? We pay still fifty percent?
Uh, yes, we do, and the officer assigned to Lakefront is, um, he's de, he is deputized, so he has the ability, and the off, he, he has authority to carry out any police functions in the city of Lakefront Village. Now, the majority of, of the students at Lakefront Village, at, at Southfield, Lakefront High School are Southfield students, and, and I think I see where you're going with this, um, our philosophy in the police department and in the schools has always been that we wanna service our children wherever they may be. And they happen to be in Lakefront Village, we work very closely with Lakefront Village, and we want, we need to maintain this relationship in Lakefront Village to, to, to ensure the safety and security of our students there.
I was, uh, asking a question, because in the fire department, we have a contract with Lakefront Village for, for our assistance, and I'm wondering why Lakefront doesn't pay at least a quarter of the half towards that, since there are Lakefront youngsters in that school as well?
Yes, and we can look into that, that's, yeah, that's, that's something that we can keep on the table, we can research that further.
Thank you very much.
Fair question, uh, we will be looking at other cooperative, uh, opportunities, uh, with the union cities, and, uh, certainly will keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Participation, potential participation.
Yeah. The officer, do they, uh, is there a role in the school to monitor the situation, or do they take an active part in the education process at, at some point?
Both. Um, the, the officers, they're, they're multifaceted, they, and that's what's so special about this program. These officers are not just there to enforce laws and to, you know, you know, make arrests and things like that.
Be that guy.
They're in, exactly. I mean, they are an active part of the school environment. They are a part of the school staff. Um, the officers, um, they, they do, um, drunk driving, um, presentations and, and educational type seminars for the students. Um, so, yeah, so it's, it's, it's really, it's really a, a multifaceted position, and, um, and they do a lot more than just, just taking enforcement action in the school.
Okay, I think that's a real important, that our students get to know the, the police officer in another role other than the bad guy, or the, the guy that prevents them from doing things, but as someone that's ingrained in the school system, uh, along with the other educators. The other question I have is, are these, uh, officers out of the loop of responding to other emergencies? If we have another emergency someplace else, do they maintain their, their position at the school, or are they available to respond to other emergencies during their, during their, their, uh, hours?
Their, their respons, their main responsibility is to the schools.
Okay.
So, if we have routine, if you can call it that, incidents in the community, uh, we have officers who are, who are assigned to take care of those. If we have a major emergency, then yes, those officers are available to assist us with that. The officers still report directly to the police department, and are still accountable to the police department's chain of command, so, yes.
Okay, so they're, they're not the first responders, but they're, uh, supporting, uh, whatever, whatever needs if we have a, a major emergency?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
This does define any police presence on the street, is that correct?
Great question, and, uh, and, and no more. We made sure that, that, uh, we repositioned things internally to make sure that there will be no reduction in service delivery to the residents of the city, and, and to any police response at all. It will not affect that at all.
These officers also, um, if there's a, uh, situation in another school, they would go to the other school?
Yeah.
An intruder or something like that?
Yeah.
All right, um, if there's no objection, then this will also advance the consent agenda at seven, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, next, we're moving on to, um, Mr. Jordan, Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, Honorable City Council. We're, uh, requesting an action to transfer the title, uh, to authorize the execution of a quick point deed for a parcel that was originally acquired in the city's name through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, uh, one. The subject property is located at one eight nine one one Addison. If council will recall, um, on August third, two thousand and nine, we took, we had three actions related to Neighborhood Stabilization Program. One of them was the formation of the Growth Corporation, which subsequently took on the acquisition of other properties, but because we had a client ready to go at that time, we asked for authority to buy this property. That deal unfortunately did not, uh, come to fruition with that family. We now have a parcel that has been acquired with Neighborhood Stabilization Fund, sitting in the city's name. We have a family that's mortgage-ready to acquire the subject property, and we'd like to close in the next two weeks. Therefore, we're requesting that the property be titled into the Growth Corporation, who will handle the closing in the same fashion that we've handled all of the other property closings.
Any questions? Mr. Lance?
Uh, this, uh, the Growth Corporation, it has a city, uh, maybe a, a city agency?
I, I think it would be fair to classify it as a city agency. City council authorized its formation for a single purpose. It is organized as a Michigan nonprofit corporation.
Okay. Mr. Moss?
Are there any other houses that could be in a similar situation like this, that could be put to use and back on the market?
There, there is one other, Neighborhood Stabilization Program has other homes that are in...
Right.
The Growth Corporation's name, there is one other property in the city's name, however, that property was undertook as, uh, what we refer to as an activity for, it abuts a, a city-owned piece of property or a park. So, that property, uh, I actually have three other properties in the name of the Growth Corporation, I'll be asking to do the reverse, take them from the Growth Corporation and put them in the city's name, as they, those four parcels abut city-owned parks, and were properties that were adjacent to city-owned parcels.
Okay.
Two, two on Berg, one on Evergreen, and one on Seminole, all abut city-owned parks or green spaces.
Okay. Um, this is not a new topic, we've been discussing this for three, four years, it's just a new wrinkle. Uh, so if there's no other objection to this, then we'll, uh, put this on a consent agenda at seven PM.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan, you can remain up there with your rag.
I'm number six, right?
Uh, we're, we're going to quickly cover the next item, uh, and then, uh...
Engineer.
You and, no, you and, uh, this town's adult, they're engineering this. Uh, we have a extension, some extension of existing contracts for our golf professional. There are questions in this regard, Mr. Doug Block, this here from Parks and Recreation, uh, but this is, uh, quite straightforward and, uh, simply to, to continue business as we, uh, with the golf professional, Kerry Anthony Ryan, doing business as TA Pro Shop. Uh, during this period, uh, city staff will return to the city council to present a comprehensive review of the city's golf operations and recommendations, uh, moving forward.
Any questions? This is a six-month extension, uh, seeing no, uh, questions, then this, oh, oh, sorry.
I have one question, Mr. Shred, when will the popular board come back from, from the council?
Uh, it's going to be within six months, period before June thirty, and, uh, we don't have an exact date yet, but, uh, this review is, is underway in parts of the administration of the street.
Okay, um, then, we'll be moving this item also to the, um, consent agenda at seven PM. All right, uh, item number six on our agenda is an engineering consultant services contract. You'll recall that, um, we have an extension on our engineering contract, which is expired. Um, the extension would cover the period so that we, um, the council could, could look at this. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, Honorable City Council. Uh, this evening, we're requesting authority to retain six different consulting engineering firms. We're requesting a contract, uh, period initially three years, with an additional two-year, one, with an additional two, two one-year extensions. In, uh, November, staff, uh, sent out a, a request for qualifications for engineering firms. The, uh, request, we focused on firms that are licensed within the Michigan, licensed by the Michigan Department of Transportation and within the state of Michigan. We also advertised on the state website.
Ray, would you like to...
Uh, we advertised on the Mitten website, which we typically do, city of Southfield website.
We advertised on the Mitten website, which we typically do, City of Southfield website. All of the usual advertising courses. We tried to do a fairly thorough outreach with a focus on companies that could provide the kinds of services that we typically contact with.
We're, we received a number of bids. We actually received seven.
Seven.
Six, which we felt were qualified. Interestingly enough, in the last five years, we've worked with five of these firms directly at the city. And the sixth one has done a lot of private work within the city of Southfield. Those six firms are environmental consulting and technology of Ann Arbor, Michigan. ECT has done a lot of our stormwater work. Now, within that stormwater work, a lot of the work that is being recognized with, by the MDQ and the EPA as award-winning, that is the type of work ECT specializes in. The next firm is Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, who has a 50-year history with the city of Southfield. Done a lot of road, water and sewer work. Novak and Frost Engineering, it would be the, the new player to the city. This firm has a, it does primarily private work. As with the downturn of the economy, they've turned and they've started to focus a little bit more on some local work. They're a local-based firm out of, they have offices in Pontiac and Willow. We felt that they were a good match for Southfield. The fourth firm is OHM. The city has been working with them for the last seven, five to seven years. They've done road construction, water, sewer projects for the city. Tucker Young has been working with us for the last five years. Currently is complete, is working on three projects for the city. Their strength is on water and sewer systems, working on a water project in Nine Mile Prescott, reconstructing the water system along Greenfield and Northland, and then working up in the Edwards Pierce area. Then Wade Trim, who's been doing some work through the city, through a grant that the city received from the Water Resource Commission. And they have been focused on reducing infiltration into our sanitary sewer system. The process was ran as an RFQ. That was intentional. In the event that we have any federal grants, the city would go after directly. We have completed a step in securing engineering. And this process satisfies, satisfies both the federal and state requirements. Happy to answer any questions, if any.
I have a question. One of the advantages we've had with long-term relationships with our, with our engineering is that institutional history of our projects. How do we, with having, this is the first time we've ever had this many firms taking care of the city of Southfield. So walk me through, we have a water and sewer project. How do we pick among them who will get that contract? And who is responsible for maintaining that institutional information that would allow us to follow up or to test? And I'll give, and I want to add something else to that before I, before you answer. We have had a challenge with a project being designed onsite inspectors and then, and then working with the city staff. And I have another question after this is over. Because when it comes to city staff, is our staff, will our staff be required to be interacting with six different firms? And is it possible that more than one firm will be working on one contract? Again, who's going to be responsible for ensuring that we have one report, one comprehensive approach to our, to our project?
Let me state that we currently work with five of these firms. And we are managing that. We meet monthly with each of our engineering firms, and we've done that now for the last year, last 12 to 15 months. We run a, continue, a monthly, we run a project list. Relative to institutional knowledge, you are correct. There is, there are some challenges where certain individuals have just a history of knowledge. But some of those things we've done to mitigate that. One, the city's GIS system now maps everything we're doing. We're no longer in a period where, where there are shelves rolling. Any work we do, we have, we have, we obtain copies of the design build. And just earlier, we were talking about our design-build information is then reported into our GIS system. So what's been built as things are actually built, those records are kept. And I would say the last five to seven years, every month, there's some new piece of, daily, new information's being layered to that. Where old site plan information is being pulled out and put into that GIS system. So those as-built drawings are there. What can be lost in the institutional knowledge may be the politics of a, a project. Not necessarily the blueprint, the drawings, but how it came about, how one project was decided over another. We do have the monthly meetings. We probably, and we'll evolve with this, Mayor. We'll probably need to evolve to where we're keeping just brief notes of those monthly meetings. But we have, every project's reviewed by, whether it's OHM, HRC right now. There are similar meetings with Wade Trim and the Water Resource folks for what they're doing. Brandy and Mary, who have been working with ECT out of Stormwater, they have a frequency of, of meeting. So we probably need to do a better job at telling that, the story of, you know, there was a meeting this day, and this is what was discussed, and why certain decisions were made. It's going to be a challenge. I mean, it, there are some who might say one. But I will tell you, what is really, what staff likes about this is the opportunity to have, if we have a road project, rebuilding of Nine, of Nine Mile between Beach and Telegraph, to say to these firms, we want you to bid this. We want you to give the best price to the city of Southfield. We're really aimed at trying to get the best price for this. In the past, when we had one company, we had a fixed price, and we were set. By doing this RFQ process, it allows us to introduce an element of competition. And we had a lot of conversation about how, how we can make that work. It's clear, it was interesting, of the, of the six firms, four of them use Tucker Young as water specialist to design, if you're looking at a system leaking, it was clear that they were, they were hands down the best expert. So if we had something that we were trying to detect, say, water leakage within our system, and we conduct a quarterly review of how much water we're buying, how much water we're billing out, if we were to suddenly see a large amount of loss, we'd bring Tucker in for that. Pressure, water pressure systems, they're, one of their expertise is helping evaluate the flow and pressure. And we're actually working on a number of what we call mini-water flow, or water pressure stabilization projects to ensure that we have adequate fire protection throughout the city. There will be challenges for, for staff on this, but I think we can get over losing that institutional knowledge.
So is there an expectation from these firms on the percentage of work they will get? Or is there a guarantee?
No, no. No, there's no guarantee. It's competitive, and it's based on specialization. The qualities that they have bring to the table in a competitive situation, as well as, we set standards that all the companies had to agree to. First of all, have to be, they have to have significant experience with the, with the agencies, the state agencies, which they all do. Secondly, they had to agree that our standards of fit and finish, which are exemplified by the ribbon cutting we had on the bridge jump. That's the standard we wanted.
And I want to maintain that, because we have not had that.
Exactly. Secondly, they all agreed their responsibility in reporting to the city immediately if there are problems on a job. And we, if we're not getting the quality, we'll shut the job down immediately if necessary. So all of, all of the lines of communication are laid out in the, in the requirements. Thirdly, this does make us, this is a necessary step for federal funding. So all these companies qualify in that regard as well. So I think we have got a good combination of institutional knowledge, because the firms we've been working with are still on the list. But no, there's no set percentage, because it depends on the, what capital projects council approves, capital projects that are brought forward through the CIP process, and that, that are put into the budget, which of course, you know, gets reviewed each year, project by project. So, no, there's no, there's no certain percentage.
So with that being said, if we do have a project, and we have six firms, how do we, how do they compete for it? Is it, walk me through that. We have a road project, and you have six firms. Do they, what are they doing to compete? How, and how do we evaluate that and choose the company to, to get the job?
We'll probably ask them to give us a price for preliminary engineering and construction, design engineering. Within that, there could be some twist. OHM uses what's called the log concept. They may come back to us and say, we can reduce the cost of engineering by not doing a full set. We'll essentially do a design build for this road. We, we want to encourage some creativity amongst these firms on each project and see. But they'll have an opportunity to bid as projects come along. They'll need to sharpen their pencils. They know who they're competing against. We'll tend to, we'll be looking for fixed prices.
And, and they submit a proposal as if they were outside, I mean, not as if it was outside, the process that we use now. So what's the advantage of having them under contract versus we have a road and we just open it up like we normally do, and everyone competes? What's the advantage?
By being, by being pre-screened, by being pre-screened or pre-qualified, we'll be much quicker. This is a mechanism that the Michigan Department of Transportation uses, as well as Oakland County Roads. You have them pre-qualified. When a project's ready to go, you're, you're a little bit more, you could be a little bit more nimble, a little quicker, as well as foster competition. We also stress communication with these folks. How they handle their business. Are they using Facebook and Twitter to communicate that they're out there doing a job? We want to move beyond the point of where we're, you know, distributing flyers in neighborhoods. There's got to be more cost-effective ways to communicate.
Okay. So this is a common practice?
This, both MDOT and Oakland County Road Commission use this process.
Mr. Fakasi, then Mr. Fraser, then Mr. Lamb?
Those projects that are presently on the drawing boards, how are those being worked on?
The, the ones that are presently on the project, um,
Evergreen Road, for example.
It, it, that has been previously committed to HRC. I would recommend that they continue to work with us on that. HRC, Lee is working on Nine Mile from Greenfield to Southfield. What projects does OHM have? They just finished Civic Center.
Yeah, the next one for them will be Evergreen from 12 Mile on Albany Masters, a real there for a couple of years there.
We've got some that have been committed for funding, and we've already engaged engineering. For example, council authorized HRC back in 2009 on Evergreen. HRC is also working on the Purnet Terrain by BSF. They've been working with us on that. But there will be new projects that come up that'll move to this competitive process.
Are there any jobs that are, that were done under shovel-ready that have not been completed that may need other engineering firms to bid on that? Work that was previously looked at and designed, even though the design may not be the one that's chosen? How does that work out? Would they have already got a?
It, it, I, I would recommend that if we have a project that we previously submitted as shovel-ready, and they did some design work, that we allow that firm to continue. However, I'd like the opportunity to sit down and have them sharpen their pencil on the engineering costs. And we've been doing some analysis of what we're spending engineering costs. And, you know, some firms use a flat rate, a multiplier rate. We really want to try to get those costs down a little bit, frankly, squeeze those vendors.
The other thing that I was keenly aware of at the time that was done was Lasher Road between 11 Mile Road and 12, where I believe that the road construction is great, but the side and drives were, I guess, ignored as to the quality, as well as aesthetics that could have been used to make it better. Presently, who does the inspections, and who looks at the plans, and who makes corrections if they can find them, other than the county?
Lee, do you want to?
Lee, maybe walk up with us.
Yeah, for local city projects. So, thanks. On city projects, when our consulting engineers have done the design work, city staff in-house reviews the plans. And it goes to different people here, between us and over at the Public Works Department, between Public Works and Engineering. Typically, that design firm is also responsible for inspection. So I'm typically the city liaison overseeing that construction project. When it's a road commission project, such as Lasher Road, they sometimes do their own in-house design or contract it out. The city gets a chance to look at the plans, mostly because we're cost participating. This is affecting our residents. They do their own inspections, and they include us if there's any issues that come up that they need city input on. And they've been very responsive. We work closely with their, their head inspector out there during construction.
Who has time, I guess, I know we're short of people, but who has time to, to review these plans to particulars? Like, for example, we talked about, you know, the appeal from curbside. And, and we see something that could be a better design or, or more, I would say, beautified the neighborhood, whatever. At what point should we add to those things? I would think there's two streets, both Telegraph Road and that median, and, and Lasher Road with the driveways. And, and I know it was difficult to try to see all those things, but, but I think that that's very important. A given example is North Telegraph Road, where, where the city wasn't sought to intervene in a couple of appearance items, and built walkways, and they built sidewalks, and they built, supposedly they built them, and fences and things like that to, to add to the character of the roadway. When do we get a chance to do similar things?
Well, if those are things that we're interested in doing, that really should happen early in the design phase.
Yeah.
And they would just have to, they would ask the city participate in those costs. If there are more beautification than we want to do in Southfield, you know, that's something that we'd work out within the time that the agreement comes.
And I think the agreement's the key thing there. Because what I hear you saying, Councilman Fakasi, is you feel we need to negotiate a stronger position. These agreements that, when we get them from MDOT and even the Oakland County Road Commission, are pretty much a boilerplate agreement. When we start talking about applying a different level of fit and finish, the county road commission will tell you, we're going to replace concrete driveways with concrete driveways. We're going to replace asphalt driveways with asphalt driveways. If we want all those driveways to be concrete, then we need to negotiate that in a contract. And they're probably going to come to us and say, well, that's going to be on your dime. And then we're going to have to come back to you folks and say, all right, we can get, every driveway could be concrete, but this is the extra, it'll become a part D of some of these, you know, some of these contracts you've seen in the past have been part A, B, C. There might now be a part D. And we can certainly do that, but I am certain they'll be coming back to us for the cost as well.
I, I recognize it's difficult to watch everything. I'm just not satisfied with, with what has happened on Lasher and 12 Mile Road. Doing half of a lane and three quarters of a lane and, and Doing half of a lane and three quarters of a lane and not, you know, you've got two houses next door, each other one's asphalt, one's concrete, looks like, whatever. And we caught that, I think, Lee, on Telegraph Road where they said their top sill can have two and a half inch stones. I mean, man, anybody can imagine having a two and a half inch stone on your top sill, you know? And those are the kinds of things that, their standards are quite different than our standards in the same way as Inks to Road when our design, original design was whatever, when the state came in and they said, "Well, you got to add another foot, wasn't it? Foot on your roadways for lane widening or whatever side?" I mean, when do we, when do we get a chance to review that, I guess, closer and have maybe a closer liaison with these firms?
Well, a closer liaison, we may end up, within this process, there could be a bid that we ask these different engineering firms to bid on in this group that says, "Become our design standards coordinator." Review the construction, review things as they're built.
That's the word I was looking for in designs coordinator.
When we had situations where we needed an advocate, okay, one of the firms came through.
Yep.
And that could be an opportunity for that particular firm. That was Tucker Young.
And we have Tucker Young evaluate the engineering work of one of our consultants as kind of a standards review.
I don't want to shift blame onto our staff because I know our staff does a great job in what they have to deal with. But I just am not happy with, you know, with what I've seen and I know it's not our...
And my observation is...
My gosh, I mean, we're four years on the Telegraph Road median. Four years this year, right? Four or five.
Yeah.
And it's still messed up. And I can't, you know, we've had meetings with state and they're supposedly broke. I don't know why they're broke. You take all our money.
That one's still unwilling.
Prior to executing those contracts, we need to strengthen opportunities.
Yeah, each of these engineering firms has their expertise that's sometimes different than other ones. So, in reality, even though we have six on our list, would all six always get an opportunity to bid on a job even if there are others? Some are clearly head and shoulders of them with what they do. For instance, some of the engineering firms may be experts in road construction and others in water construction.
Right.
If we're going to have a water project, would we send RFQ to all six of them? And let them bid on it?
Probably not likely. I mean, because I think that most of the firms are pretty full-service consulting engineering firms with a wide range of expertise, but some of them are a little more narrowed in their, you know, singular expertise. So, it would depend what type of project it was. Something like roads, we'd probably be sending it out to five of the six. ECT in particular, I don't think they're much road engineers. I mean, we certainly could give them an opportunity. Maybe they would partner with us on trying to come up with some innovative stormwater management as an aspect of our road design. So, we may still include them as part of the design process. It just may be a different aspect.
And that's an excellent point. In the next few months, EPA is supposed to come forward with new stormwater requirements that will actually require that every road we rebuild have a new stormwater standard at ten-year event. And we're going to see a different level of engineering. A firm like ECT has more scientists in its consortium of employees versus PE engineers. They tend to think very different. A lot of the work they've done for us in Parks and Rec and stormwater, that's why I think that they're winning these awards. If there were a grant funding opportunity for something innovative, creative in the stormwater, the energy arena, air quality, I'd probably recommend that ECT take the lead on it because they have more scientists in a broader group. That's not to say that OHM or HRC couldn't do a tag team because one of the things we saw in this process is all these firms have worked with each other. They're almost like a Blue Cross Blue Shield where they have rates that they all accept from each other from where every one of them said they've worked with Tucker Young except for Novak and Frost. Now, there are a number of them work with ECT because they've got this plethora of scientists. They've got oceanographers on their group, biologists. Most of the firms have PEs, landscape architects, and maybe a planner or two. But ECT brings this collection of chemists, biologists, an oceanographer, and I think that gives them a different set of strength.
It's probably not likely we're going to need an oceanographer.
Stormwater, you might. I mean, we have a state about to have a Great Lakes Initiative and there could be a huge new emphasis on our watershed management.
Okay. One of the things that pleases me is that Tucker Young becomes one of the primary engineering firms that we've put on this list because I know in years past, when we asked for bids, a firm would come in and say, "Oh, yeah, and by the way, we use Tucker Young as a subcontractor." And then they win the, they win the approval, but Tucker Young doesn't get very much work. So, it was a sales job to... So, I'm glad to see that Tucker Young is, you know, at the starting line with everybody else. One of the problems that we had when we did Twelve Mile Road, you know, there was a lot of controversy, it lasted a long time about the water pressure, but it was all over. And we ended up finding out that somebody forgot to open up a valve or something. And everybody was pointing fingers at the other guy saying, "Yeah, I did everything I was supposed to, but they didn't do what they were supposed to." With six folks or four folks or three folks that are, that may share parts of a job, how do we plan to sort out something if, when the job is over, there's a concern?
I typically say that once a project goes to construction, we're dealing with one firm. And that's the firm that's going to be project managing, overseeing the day-to-day progress of the job. And they're typically also the ones that are inspecting on that job. So, there shouldn't be that. The only other consultant that's really a part of it would be our testing consultant, which is separate from this group. And a testing consultant would be doing testing for all of these firms.
Yeah, except it happened. I know it shouldn't have happened, but it did.
But the Twelve Mile wasn't on the construct, that water main was between system operators. Oakland County Water, they had a gate valve shut.
Shut Oakland County Water, is that right?
Yeah, they had, and when you hit Twelve Mile, you have a system where, you know, the county has water mains in there, Lafferty Village has water mains, and the city. You've got a whole bunch of infrastructure almost stacked on. So, it's easy for someone simply not to have a valve open. Where we've worked to correct that is developing and designing more systems like what we have with our SCADA system where we create electronic systems to monitor when gates are open and that. We have the electronic monitoring on our pump stations for twelve of them, or pumps? For twelve pump stations, that's giving us a lot of insight and that's up and running. But we now may want to look at taking that concept and applying it to main gate valves to prevent these things from happening. Because it's as simple as someone who works for someone else's system shutting it down. Our guys are calling our people trying to figure it out, but their system's beating our system.
Well, my whole point for bringing that up is we have a limited amount of personnel to follow up on this. And when we talk about fit and finish, when the job is done, we do a ribbon cutting, we ought to have the best job that we can get. And if there's a problem, I don't want to make our job for our people any harder than it already is because, you know, our folks are running almost at full tilt all the time. And I just want to make sure that in this plan of having six people that can bid on these, that we have some, some kind of assurance that our people don't have to spend a lot more time figuring out what it's all about. And that's the only reason.
And our field people are out in the field as these systems are built. And Larry Searle's in the water, you know, the...
Well, the water department on any water project is going to work closely. And that, you know, and out on Twelve Mile Road, you know, because we have a water master plan, so after that water main was constructed, we were expecting certain flows and pressures. And when we weren't seeing them, when they did a hydro flow test, and we weren't seeing what we were expecting to see based on the water master plan that flows through that system. And then it turned into troubleshooting. Okay, what have we got? And, you know, our water department goes out and they found it. So, you know, there was a valve, someone hit the driveway over it. So, you know, they didn't know it was there, that had to be dug up. So, I mean, it's a troubleshooting, you know, and over years, different things can occur like that, but...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
About five years ago, I think, you have an engineering company. But first, let me, let me ask, are the companies that we hire, they send out their people to inspect sidewalks or roads, are they monitored by us?
Well, the inspectors work directly for that consulting firm.
Right, right.
And the city, we're always out there as part of the weekly progress meetings if anything comes up. And certainly the residents, they tend to call us. I mean, flyers go out and there's usually my number on it and the consulting firm's number. We, our consulting firms, these engineering firms are, they know that we have high expectations. They're, they know we're expecting them to put their best inspectors out there so that we can get a smooth job. Our jobs are watched closely by all of you and our residents.
Of the inspectors that they send out, a funny story. On Twelve and Evergreen, on that station before it was sold to Marathon, a woman was inspecting the sidewalks and she goes to the owner of the station and claims the sidewalk had to be replaced. And he went up to look at it, nothing to be replaced. So, she, he called me and I went and I looked at the sidewalks. They didn't need replacing. Within an hour, they had a crew come in and chop everything up. And within the next two hours, I put the cement down. I called in, I don't know who was the head of the building department, and they couldn't do anything, it was too late. So, this company took the initiative to change the sidewalk and I don't know who they charged, probably us. So, that's an abuse. You were talking about abuse of the road. So, how do we know that the work that they do should be done? We have to take their word that they have to change the sidewalk just like this happened over there.
But the city, if I could speak to that, the city sets the guidelines, that that was probably part of a sidewalk program.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that inspector, they have a sheet and our sidewalk program, we don't, it's a big city, we don't hit all the neighborhoods that frequently. So, we're pretty stringent.
Or you won't think they'll use it.
So, when we do replace, I mean, if there's a crack, it may not have a truck yet, but if it's a crack, we make them replace it. And so, those were very strict, strict guidelines that came through. So, those, in that case, they would be working...
They were very strict guidelines and they still did it in two or four hours.
Well, but those types of things with the sidewalk programs, notices, because people had to pay for that, the property owners did.
I know that and he confirmed. He said there was nothing wrong and I went out, I couldn't find a thing wrong with it either.
Well, notices go out ahead of time as part of that sidewalk program. So, if people had, you know, a problem, they could contest it. The inspector would come out and, you know, some reevaluate.
They protested to me, but before I got to the city to do anything, they already did the job.
Yeah, they probably were protesting when they saw the trucks out there, not when they got their mailer.
Usually we're in trouble when I'm being quick enough.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I do my work.
To the chair, that methodology of how sidewalks were done as long as it's been replaced, we do not do, I know what happened on that situation. And that result was a safe and quality appearance of the city and functionality, but the way it was done was problematic. And that is no longer a methodology that's used.
Moving on, Ms. Jordan?
Yes. I'm very, very pleased with having the six engineering firms that we're dealing with. We go back and we really look at the history of our original consulting services. We used one firm and they were receiving all of the city's business. It was exclusive, exclusive with any women-owned or by lady-owned businesses. And they had a monopoly on our engineering services. So, I think this is very, very appropriate for the country we're in. I think we're going to get competitive bidding. And so, I just commend you all for this, the plan that you've been making today. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? If not, this also will advance the seven PM consent agenda. Thank you, council, and so, it's been deserved. Number seven, we have the council meeting scheduled for 2013. Ms. Banks?
Thank you. TSU will find a proposed council meeting schedule for 2013. The schedule does take into account various Michigan Municipal League and NLC conferences and also elections. Meetings can be added at any time and we recommend that you're on your body to schedule it for them.
Any discussion on that? Ms. Seymour?
Yeah, I don't know if this is directly related, but it is related. We, don't we every year select a media newspaper to advertise in? And in the past year, I think we advertised in the Sun. And I'm wondering why we don't advertise in the Sun because it reaches everyone and not everyone reaches the Sun. And we think this is more extensive, but I think the fact that it reaches more people is, I mean, that's what we're all about, is to let people know what's going on. I think we're, I think we're making, you know, considering costs, which isn't major when we're not reaching the sun, very few people read the Sun. I mean, we're meeting the law, but we're not meeting the expectation of top of...
We've discussed this before. Ms. Banks?
A year ago.
Well, the item before us today is to approve the council meeting schedule. I think what Council and Ms. Seymour are talking about is advertising illegal notices, which we'd be more than happy to review with Council and whatever your pleasure is, but the item that we're presenting is...
I'm going to refer this to the council. I have no objection to the finance committee.
Thank you.
And I would just point out also, this does not preclude this schedule from adding meetings, obviously. We want to talk about adding, and add a meeting in February later this afternoon. So, Ms. Fraser, I'm sorry.
No, I'm...
Oh, Ms. Jordan?
Well, I was just going to say, we're going to have meetings. I would hope that we know enough in advance so that proper...
Yes, ma'am. I agree with you. Ms. Fraser?
Yeah, looking at this schedule, it looks like we don't have anything to do by only meeting twice a month. And I think, my own personal feeling is at times like this is when we ought to spend our time fighting for the future. And maybe it would be an opportunity to bring in the different departments and find out what their plans are for the, for the future of the city. Because we haven't done that in quite a while.
We're planning to do that starting on February, the tentative date that we need to discuss is a visioning session, starting with review of the strategic plan on February 28th. That was in an email I sent to you on Thursday. We need to get concurrence on, that's the date the administration prefers. However, I'm looking forward to that meeting on the 28th, Ms. Fraser, so that we see where we go from there. And I'm sure that we will have, what I envision is that we will have other things that shoot off of that. That'll be a starting point on February 28th.
Yeah, I'm sure we will, but, no, no, just, to me, it looks like we've, we're saying that we don't have enough things to do that we only meet twice a month, but, you know, maybe that's only me.
We found that easier to add meetings than to cancel them, so...
Well, for somebody that has a full calendar all year long, sometimes it's pretty difficult to add a meeting.
Well, plan on Monday.
Oh, that doesn't make any sense either, to leave a Monday open just in case we're going to add a meeting, so...
Yeah, but our meetings take place at 10 hours, eight hours, seven hours, except for everything else.
That's why we ought to have more meetings so they don't take so long.
I don't care, it doesn't matter to me. But I don't like these hours. Uh, but I don't like these hours out on the half of the morning. Tonight will probably, won't finish till maybe twelve, one o'clock in the morning, starting at three now.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Fraser. I, I personally think people, you know, especially in council, make plans when they think there aren't going to be meetings, and when you add a meeting, um, there are some, people have to change plans recently, and staff has, you know, not all staff has to always have Mondays. We, we can reserve our Mondays, and I don't think that's entirely reasonable, but staff certainly doesn't have to come to all meetings, they come to certain ones, and I think it's, you know, we're trying to do more with less, and we're asking more of them, and I, I'm curious why the planning commission has four meetings a month, there's not that much going on in, in, you know, new developments, and if they have four meetings and we have two, and we're the ones that have the heavy lifting. So, I'm, I'm in agreement that we maybe are...
I'm comfortable with this calendar, it's almost like we can reserve our typical usual business that comes up throughout the duration of the year for these two meetings a month. And we had last year mentioned numerous times about having special one item agenda meetings, for example, on D D A and, or Northland, and just having that specific, or having one just on the city center, maybe even a meeting with the city center board. So, I'm okay with having two a month for our, our business that typically comes up throughout the year, and then figuring out what works with the best of all of our schedules. It doesn't have to be a Monday. You know, if we can pick a Saturday in March where we really wanted to tackle all the issues surrounding D D A, I'd be comfortable with scheduling that with enough notice as it comes up, and not necessarily putting it on a Monday night regular meeting schedule. So, I'm comfortable with this, um, with the option of, of, as Mr. Fraser says, doing more.
Mr. Proctor?
Yeah, by, um, having a, an extra day in each month, it's just as easy to cancel a meeting as to add one. But I think the more important thing is that the surprise meetings, meeting that, you know, we've got a whole backlog of stuff, let's, we have another meeting, and we don't get all the council people there, because now we're not, you know, looking at a good calendar, we're just setting a time in the day. And, and, uh, I don't, myself, I, you know, I make most of the meetings, well, all the council meetings, but I mean, the other ones, I, I mean, there's so many things that I see happen that we talked about in the city, and, and we must consider, we don't have time for those things. We, we have time for, for the agenda, some of it, there's two items on the agenda, and we say, okay, bam, 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 and we're home. And I think there's so many things that, you know, when there is a lighter agenda, either put more things on that, a more discussion type as opposed to making a decision, uh, item. And I don't think we discuss happenings as much as we should. And so, I don't know how to get there, but I mean, I'll go along with this schedule that you have here, I just, I, I don't, you know, I don't know how to, how to really gauge everybody's schedule, but, uh, I don't know, I, I guess, you know, being around, you know, there used to be every Monday, every Thursday, once a month on Saturday, so, you know, that's, I couldn't, uh, but anyways, um, I thought, I, I'll take what you've got here, it's, it's...
We are going to add meetings, but there's, um, we...
They really have to be timely, okay, and they really got to be, you know, where, I mean, given this meeting today, coming in at three o'clock, you know, I mean, I mean, coming out of, you know, retail business, like, because I go eighteen hours in, it doesn't bother me, but you're there, individuals, I used to go in, you know, from three o'clock to midnight, and making last decisions on things that are very important, and so, uh, I just think that...
I would ask that you, um, have a low patience, um...
What we're talking about tonight is, is to read it all, it take, you know, you could read a thousand, uh, page book in the same period of time, because, I mean, you have to think through this thing and, and see how it all works out, and it's difficult. I mean, as much experience as I've had with it, you know, it took me yesterday and today, a little bit Saturday after we left the show, to go through this stuff, and then I get the right thing, and then go through it again, maybe three or four times before you get the message, and, and, and I think that, uh, that's tough.
I, I would ask that you have, um, a low patience, um, as we have a number of things that we indicated last year that we wanted to discuss this year, including, uh, Northland, uh, D D A, the, the city center, um, there are other things, and it is my intention as your chair to, uh, schedule these things enough in advance, um, but I, you know, I'm, I just took over, so I need a little more...
Well, this is, this is, you should have, you should have, you know, run right into it, you know.
And, and we are starting with a, in February, a third meeting, that's going to be a very important meeting, our, our visioning, uh, meeting. I, I believe that that meeting alone will generate a whole nother set of topics that we want to tackle. So, um, uh, this is the process I would like to follow for now. Um, uh, Ms. Lawrence Heather, hand up.
And I appreciate your comment on having the, the patience and trust, but the other thing I do want to emphasize is that our boards and commissions, we must have time aside to set an agenda and make sure our boards and commissions are on the same page here, and that requires the time to live it on our own, and whether we do it however we need to do that, we need to make sure that we are scheduling, because some of our boards and commissions have never gotten a direction, they're all new members, they have not gotten a direction. It's easy for us to criticize when we haven't given them a direction, and we want, they're supposed to be working in the, in sync with the council and to be able to, you know, gather information and be advisors to it, and I don't think we're getting advisors from our, from our, from our, our boards and commissions. And that's what the public input, part of it, that we have structured, that I think that we're not utilizing well, so that, you know, like, our, um, total living commission, when is the last time we sat down and talked to them? And that commission had an amazing, um, directed kind of account to be representative of the diversity and the different areas of the community, and, and we don't talk to them, we don't, you know, we don't. Uh, I'm a strong advocate in talking to, to our, our boards and commissions, and I mean, you're planning, the planning commission gets beat up a lot because they're so directly connected to your agenda. But when's the last time, I think we did it about five or six years ago, where we actually sat down with them in that, in that room, and we talked about, what is our vision for the city, what is it that we see, what is it we're getting or not getting, and that's, that's a time commitment on us. And the only thing I do ask, um, and this will be my patience with you, is that we, we don't get it like two weeks before. I appreciate that this is the new year and this is the...
It's going to be a, I envision us having a group discussion on, on the items, and then, then setting the schedules collectively.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and as it said, it doesn't have, necessarily have to be a Monday, but, um, we have some big things to tackle in the year ahead, and, um, everybody needs to be prepared, um, so, uh, I'm committed to making that work.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, anyone else on the calendar? Ms. Banks?
Um, would you, did we agree on the February twenty eighth date for a vision order? Because it's all put that on the calendar.
I, I had sent an email and, to everyone, asking them to bring their calendars this evening. Um, we can do that now, very quickly, if, um, we were talking at seven P M, correct, Mr. Sherrill?
I was suggesting six.
Or six P M on the twenty eighth, and this is the initial start of this, um, our strategic plan, um, has expired, um, and it's, we'll start with the strategic plan, and look, um, a lot of good work went into that, that plan, and typically, when you have a strategic plan, uh, you need to sit down, review it from time to time, and maybe you alter directions, you amend it, uh, whatever, but as a starting point for this, uh, discussion, we want to start with the strategic plan and then move from there. Uh, it's February twenty eighth at six P M, that's a Thursday, uh, evening, is that good for everyone? Then we would add February twenty eighth to this, uh, this schedule, um, and it'll be a one topic agenda. So, um, the council meeting schedule would be amended, uh, to add the twenty eighth of February, and we'll do that, um, at our seven P M meeting, uh, the consent agenda. Okay? All right, um, we are now at, um, it is four fifteen, we're right on schedule. Um, we have, uh, we can take a two minute break, so Mr., um, Crowe can, can set up, and we'll then just have a, the planner, the purpose of the, uh, drive, agenda item eight is for the planner to present information on the rezoning. Um, Mr. Crowe really hasn't had the opportunity to, um, fully discuss this proposed rezoning. So, uh, let's take a two minute break while Mr. Crowe gets ready. Our, uh, floor recess is, is over, and, uh, we're resuming our committee as a whole. Uh, I want to, before, um, Mr. Crowe, our city planner, makes his, um, presentation, I want to make something very, very clear. There's, um, I, I don't know how this, um, it was, it did not, this did not generate from the city of Southfield. The public hearing on the rezoning of the St. Beat's property has always been scheduled for January twenty eighth at seven P M in this room. Um, I received a robo-call on Saturday, um, the newspapers and Channel Four also indicated that there was a public hearing tonight on, uh, the rezoning of the former St. Beat, uh, church property. Uh, what we're doing this afternoon is a continuation of what we, uh, council was, um, doing on December tenth. We had, um, a, a presentation from representatives of Walmart. Uh, this evening, we're, uh, this afternoon, uh, we're, we're continuing that discussion, uh, but this time, um, it's not a presentation from Walmart, although, uh, I will acknowledge that, uh, representatives of, of the company are in, in attendance today to answer questions if there are, um, but we are principally here this afternoon, uh, at the request of our city planner, to, uh, continue the backfinding that, that council has been on since it became clear to us, or, um, uh, actually, a year ago, a year ago December, um, we had, uh, we had heard that, um, uh, there may be a sale of the St. Beat's property. Uh, we did not have anything official, uh, about this until September. So, um, we are working our process for any, any public, um, or any development in the city of Southfield, and so, uh, this is another step in that process, continuing, uh, backfinding by the council. Uh, this is a study session, but there will be no questions from the audience at this session. At seven P M, uh, we will have a regular council meeting. Uh, there are ten people who asked to speak at that session, having met the council protocol of registering to speak the Wednesday before the Monday meeting. Um, with that said, then, uh, I think everybody understands where, where we are, what we're doing, so I will now turn, um, the, uh, item eight on our, uh, committee, the whole meeting agenda, uh, it's a discussion to, uh, request to rezon the St. Beat's property, and I will turn that over to, uh, city planner.
Thank you very much, through the chair. The first, um, item that we're going to discuss is the merits of the proposed rezoning on its own, and I'm going to ask the council, if they could, to forget that Walmart's even part of the consideration, just for the purposes of discussing the proposed rezoning on its own merits. Behind you is the, um, existing zoning, um, the St. Beat's property is currently zoned R two, and, um, it, uh, it's approximately nine point six acres. There's also a small sliver of O S and B two that comprises approximately two point four acres. The total rezoning request of the seat, St. Beat's property to B three equates to approximately eleven point nine four acres. And there are several tests that the planners use when considering a requested zoning amendment, one of which, an important, important one, but not its sole determination factor, is whether it's consistent with the comprehensive master plan, which was adopted by the city on April thirteen, two thousand nine. Now, the future land use map designates the corridor of the subject site is north Southfield Road Subarea, so from twelve mile north on Southfield, that generally, that area is, is quantified as north Southfield Subarea, which is a unique area that contains a mixture of multicultural retail and services. Further, the city of this, um, comprehensive master plan designates the subject site, which is located here in the purple, um, for potential large scale and mixed use development. The existing site was primarily developed for use by St. Beat Church, which is now vacant and underutilized. One objective of the sub area is to encourage the acquisition, demolition, and reuse of those properties that, by virtue of their location, condition, or value, no longer function at their highest economic potential. Specifically, the master plan states that the St. Beat Church and Southfield Plaza Retail Center are two large sites that could be redeveloped in the future. Because of their size and location on the corridor, these sites have the ability to be redeveloped as a mixed use center if desired by the city. So, generally, um, what we're here to consider is, is the existing residential office service in B two the highest and best land use for the site, or does it lend itself, based on the master plan, to some type of commercial development? Secondly, we look at compatibility of site issues, are the sites physical, geological, hydro, hydrological, and other environmental features compatible? Do the host of uses permitted in the proposed zoning district? Now, the site was previously developed in an urban setting, and there are no significant environmental features remaining on the site. Next, we look at compatibility of uses. And again, once it gets rezoned, any of the uses that are permitted in that district could go forward, and I use the hit by a bus scenario, an applicant might propose a particular use, they get hit by a bus, and they go away, once it's rezoned, all of the uses in that district could be developed, and that's why it's important to not look at one specific use. So, for example, um, uses permitted in the proposed B three district, and I like to take the time and read all of them, so that the council's fully aware of all the potential uses in the district, include medical offices, including clinics and medical laboratories, banks and similar financial institutions, post offices, private clubs or lodges, nursery school, photographic and interior decorating studios, photographic reproduction, blueprinting and print shops, funeral homes, establishments that perform personal services on premises, stores of a generally recognized retail nature, veterinary clinics and hospitals, publicly owned buildings and utilities, establishments of professional or similar trades, assembly halls and similar places of assembling, open air retail sales of plant materials and sales of lawn furniture, playground equipment, and garden supplies, hotels, restaurants, including bar lounge and carryout, and accessory buildings and uses customarily incidental to any of your loved permitted uses. Also, within the B three classification, are uses permitted subject to special approval. Those include recreation centers, motor, vehicle washing facilities, gasoline stations... Those include recreation centers, motor vehicle washing facilities, gasoline stations, automobile repair and service facilities, automobile and truck sales and showrooms, freestanding restaurants, including bar lounge and carryout restaurants, drive-in and fast food restaurants, open-air display and sales of vehicles, specialty retail sales including arcades, executive, administrative, and professional offices, motels and theaters. Again, all of those uses are either permitted by right or permitted by special approval on the requested B3 district. We also look at land suitability. The general business district is designed to provide sites for diversified business types and is often located to add to serve passerby traffic. This district will generally be used adjacent to high-volume major thoroughfares, which Southfield Road has been classified. We also look at density of use. And ultimately, the density of use on a specific site is dictated by meeting all the dimensional and parking requirements of that site. We also look at environmental impact. Since this site has already been predeveloped, there are no significant environmental features. Detention would be required for 100-year storm events, and the planning department always recommends that low-impact design measures be incorporated where feasible. We look at nature of use. All of the permitted uses in the proposed B3 district can be compatible with surrounding uses if they meet all the site plan standards. Traffic impact. Now, a traffic impact study was prepared for the proposed Walmart, but I would argue that that probably was a worst-case scenario, so it's probably the best test of all the potential uses on generating traffic. I think that's the most valid impact to look at, you know, what, what the potential traffic impacts to Southfield Road corridor and 12 Mile could be. And there are a number of recommendations in that study. We also look at aesthetics of the building and the site during the site plan review process, quality of building materials, architectural elements, landscaping, pedestrian amenities, and so forth. We look at all the infrastructure issues with regards to water surface, sanitary sewers, stormwater management. In this particular site, all of them are well-served by infrastructure. And we look at maintenance of property. Maintenance of the property values will be compatible with existing and proposed uses in the requested B3 district. Fourth, we look at reasonable return. Has the applicant demonstrated that he or she cannot receive a reasonable return on investment through developing the property with at least one of the uses permitted under the current zoning? Uses permitted under the existing districts include, but are not limited to, one-family dwellings, farms, and related buildings, accessory buildings, and family childcare homes, and the old S Office Service District, executive, administrative, and professional offices, medical offices including clinics and medical laboratories, facilities for human care, banks and similar financial institutions, libraries and government buildings, but not including storage yards and post offices, private social clubs or lodges, religious institutions, public or private schools, nursery schools, photographic and interior decorating studios, funeral homes, establishments that perform personal services on premises, veterinary clinics and hospitals, and accessory buildings and uses. In the northern portion of the requested rezoning, currently zoned B2 business, planned business district, medical office and clinics, banks and similar financial institutions, libraries and government buildings, private clubs and lodges, nursery schools and daycare center, photographic and interior decorating, establishments that perform personal services on premises, stores of a generally recognized retail nature, restaurants and carryout restaurants when attached to and located within a shopping center. Now, two of the three districts currently probably are undergoing the worst market conditions, residential and office, or there seems to be a light, and they're difficult to develop at this time. The market trends in the recent past and near future indicate that residential office development is very unlikely. Southfield Road currently serves and is designed to handle uses consistent with the requested B3 district. We talked about capacity of infrastructure, and as far as engineering is concerned, that there is appropriate capacity. A community impact statement was prepared because this combined site was over 10 acres, and that has been provided with the council's review. We also look at loss of land use. Is the zoning map amendment necessary to avoid exclusion of a loss of land use? I don't think this is applicable in this particular case. Desirable zoning trend. Is the rezoning establishing a desirable zoning trend or policy for similar or identical lands along Southfield Road and 12 Mile Road corridors? If the requested zoning amendment is branded, then a desirable zoning trend to redevelop along Southfield Road corridor between 12 and 13 mile roads is likely. One recommendation of the North-Southfield Road corridor subarea is to expand the economic base of the corridor by retaining existing jobs while creating new diverse employment opportunities, improvements that advance traffic safety and efficiency. Pedestrian access and enhanced character of the area will help to accomplish these tasks. Reasonable boundaries. Are the boundaries of the requested rezoning reasonable in relationship to surrounding and ability to meet dimensional regulations of the zoning ordinance? And based on the previous slide, you can see that the depth of the requested B3 is consistent with the other depths to the north of the other commercial zoning. Isn't it appropriate, so the boundaries aren't consistent with the area identified as potential large-scale retail and mixed-use development? Appropriate district. Is the rezoning, if the rezoning is appropriate, then is the requested zoning district more appropriate than this, from the city's perspective, than even some other zoning district? We believe that the Southfield Road corridor was designed based on its volume and number of traffic, and its regional draw of passerby traffic, that B3 is probably the most appropriate district. However, the council could consider B2 for this district as well, that would eliminate some of the more auto-oriented uses. But in general, we think that the B2-B3 district is appropriate for Southfield Road in Quilum. Finally, the last two items are spot zoning. Does this requested zoning district avoid frequently isolated or unplanned spot zone? We don't believe that spot zone is of consideration because of the, it's considerable amount of acreage, and it's not completely unique to surrounding zoning districts. And finally, has the request previously been submitted within the past one year? Whenever cities consider rezoning, market conditions can change a year in, year out, but we generally do not like to entertain the same request within a year period. We'd like to have that at least 12 months. And to my knowledge, there has not been a rezoning request in several years on this, on this parcel. So that's a quick overview of the different tests that we look at as far as compatibility and considerations when considering a zoning amendment to our, our zoning map. And I'd be happy, at this time, to answer the questions that the council may have on the rezoning itself.
Good question. On the, on the item that is before us this evening would be the funeral home and its expansion and closing of the vacancy of the street. And I have no questions other than, as I spoke to you earlier, that thought that, and I'm not opposed to it coming up tonight, but I would think that forgetting who was the petition on the corner, that all three parcels be considered at the same time. It gives more flexibility in two designs, or three designs, whatever you have, because of the relationship between the first block west of Southfield Road, which is Guy Street, and, and Southfield Road. However, I do know that the petition does need parking, his overflow is unsafe, it's probably too big, and bugs into the office buildings across the street, and he's really having a rough time as far as, as parking. But at the same time, I'd always like to see parcels of, all come up at the same time, and because of the flexibility that you have. Anyway, just my position. To the other, St. Beat's property, I've been looking at that, I guess, I've been looking at, at all the intersections in the city. I've been spending the last two, three weeks looking at all the intersections in the city, and looking what is developed on them, and, and seeing how the uses would be in this location, and looking at mixed use, and see what uses would be available to a developer to take a lease to a bank or a mortgage company and get financing for the shopping center And, and I guess all those things have to be really looked at, I think, in reviewing the kind of zones it would be, and that would be speaking to the St. Beat's property itself. But, you know, we should, we should, you know, to really objectively look at the city and, and see what's happening, it's pretty discouraging, to be honest, for me, you know, in the race here, and seeing it to its heights in a major hub in southeast Michigan. You have a shopping center at another mile in LaShire that, that is so big, it's worth only, only worth $2 million dollars, a major shopping center, and in any other city it would be 10 times that amount. Office buildings going for $300,000, it was 250,000 square feet, unheard of. And all the intersections, and I looked at the shopping center at Lincoln and Greenfield, and I was kind of looking at situations where you had everything in birds, which were adjacent to buildings and main arteries. And I was amazed to see that the shopping center at Lincoln and Greenfield had the siding and the wall is coming down and not repaired. And, and I say these things only, only because I don't, I don't see anything but the, either the people have not, cannot get money to invest into their properties, even in the shopping centers today, to keep them up to date, and includes northland. And, and it's a real concern to me. You're not only are the discs standing there mostly empty, but they're not being intended to, as far as being a positive thing for the neighborhood. And so I just looked at all the zonies that you discussed and went out of this, and saying, you know, what, what businesses are out there looking for locations, and talking to some real estate people who are, you know, the only one that came to mind, or the greatest beefy, I guess, is looking for locations, another coffee shop. But other than that, there are very few businesses that are looking to, to this area. And I'm talking about, not just called it South, I'm talking about Southfield. And, and we're really, yeah, here, just tell you, the town council in Jordan, I mean, I just, not only did I get upset with what's happening throughout the city, and I take my rights, but, but in trains, this, we, it was just came out of Friday to us, I mean, busy corridors. There's two pages, page 12 and page 13. Southfield is not even mentioned. Nowhere, not two pages of no developments whatsoever. Not only that, but Southfield is not even mentioned on the map that's, that's here showing the arteries. And, and I just say, are we all of a sudden from being the, the center of all business address, the center of it all, the center where all expressways come together, where the population center of southeast Michigan is that telegraph at 9696, and we're not even here on the map anymore? And, and to me, that's pretty depressing. And, and so we're talking about, you know, having an opportunity to look at a petition to rezon, I mean, I think we have to look at it very carefully. And, and so I go over this in my own mind, and trying to understand that if we don't get development in here, you know, we, we need revenue to keep this city safe and secure. I mean, forgetting about the streets and sewer and water and all those other amenities that we have to have, and what we take for granted. I mean, we have to make sure that we take care of our citizens and the businesses that we have there in the city. And as some of the, all the council here knows, you know, the property, personal property taxes have been looked at by the state, and that exemption for most of the office projects in the city would be exempted from personal property taxes. And, and we can look at another losing another million and a half dollars of that we're in a room a while ago, when I said the space taken all our money gets, either taking it or not allowing us to capture any revenue. And, and so I say these things only because rezoning today is, and looking at these properties are, to me, really important, and really have a tendency to see through the future what we're going to be, and, and how we can avoid the matter which I believe Southfield has had. And I know people may not like what I'm saying, but, but, I mean, they can drive around as much as I can, and they can look at, they're going as much as I can, they look at the corners and intersections as much as I do. And, and they can be proud of 12 Mile and Greenfield, and they could be 11 Mile Road and LaShire, or Lincoln and Greenfield, and, and, you know, they live in now, with farmer tactics to be, not having a grocery store outside of Myers in the city. I mean, I have looked forward to it on 1965, and said, there's going to be 118,000 people, and we're going to have 25 supervisors in the city. And, you know, I know history doesn't always repeat itself, in this case, it doesn't repeat itself, because we're sitting here, seriously, you know, a lot of us go to restaurants, you be out of the city, and you see your neighbors there, you know, and you go shopping, and you see your neighbors out in the city. And we have to bring this stuff back in. I mean, somehow, we've got to redevelop this entire city, so that we can service our residents and, and, and expand our revenue somehow. And I really don't have an answer. I really sit here without the years of experience I have, and I don't have an answer, because I, only thing I know is years, 90 years ago, when we had ordered up shopping centers, we were about 25 years old at the time, you know, we had 2,001 group of young people paid together to try to resolve some of these problems and give some insight, or whatever it was, but it be, and, and we came out of it. You listen to the economists today, they're talking 2025. And, and I don't know, I don't know, you know, how you look at this as an opportunity, or you look at it as a negative, and, and we take our chances that, that something, unless somebody's revision is regular in mind, I guess. I, I, I really struggling with this, because, you know, it, you know, I'm saying that we should take everything that comes our way, but it's almost getting that way, because we're not getting anything. And, and the more we lose, the more we lose, and we lose, basically, we used to be a city with $3.7 billion. We lost a whole billion dollars in heaven, and I think people ought to know that. You know, we don't get together long enough and together like this as a group to explain what the world's happening here, and, and to be part of the solution. But anyway, I, I would go along with, with the funeral home's request, because I think they need the help immediately. because I think they need the help immediately. But I assure that the personal wealth planning and involved in planning, I'd like to see as many parcels put together as you can so that you get good mixed uses. Because, you know, even with the zoning you have, the shopping center that's left is no prize to anybody. And it's got V T roofs in it and needs completely restoration. Ron Rose is in that corner, corner building there right to collect it where that beat is. They didn't even go to the right location. And so that whole L shape is going to be vacant, the one that exists that's still to be left, you know, so. Anyway, Mr. Chair, you want?
Through the chair, just one comment. We do try to look at access management, cross-access easements and wherever we can combine internal traffic and pedestrian access. Whether this was a standalone site or combined sites, we did try to consider that. But with regards to the rezoning itself, we'll talk about the site plan shortly.
Yeah, I have two items to bring and ask about. First one is, can you maybe even go into more detail describing the differentiation between the B zoning district and just, there's such a huge overlap, why, what is the actual true difference between them? And then follow up to that one.
Okay, I'll try to generally answer it without pulling on my book. But the B one is the lowest intensity commercial zoning district and is designed to service the immediate neighborhood of where it's located. The mom and pop type stores, the kind of stores that you walk to and, you know, buy milk and bread, mom's at John and Erin. The smaller commercial retail office service that services in the immediate vicinity.
And that's just based on footprint of the site or intensity of the site?
Well, it's intensity of use, that's the key, intensity of use. So it's going to be less auto oriented, so you're not going to have the car washes and the gas stations and the auto sales and auto repair because it's primarily designed to service the immediate neighborhood. That's on one extreme. The B three is the most intensive commercial uses, allows more auto oriented types of uses because they're generally located on major freeways and thoroughfares. And they're designed to accommodate passerby traffic as much as the neighborhood and the city as a whole. So those are the two extremes. Each one of the B one, B two and B three does allow retail. And there's different variations on the retail based on whether it's attached to a shopping center or it's a freestanding one. But in essence, there's slightly different setback requirements for each of the districts. But they all permit retail and if the site's large enough and if the user can meet the setback requirements, then it really comes down to intensity of use. So that's the biggest difference between the three.
Are zoning districts strong enough? Are they on par to communities around us? It sounds like.
I think I mentioned to you once before, just so you, to help you, a typical neighborhood drugstore, a C D S, Red A type with a pharmacy is about ten thousand square feet. And typically, that's the maximum size of a user building that would stand on its own in a B one district. And many communities restrict maximum sizes based on the intensity of use. We don't do that in our district. We basically don't. I think that's something that the council and the planning commission should look at. Is upgrading if there's particular types of uses, and again, it's about intensity. Some other communities regulate drive-throughs differently than we do. And they don't allow drive-throughs necessarily in B one, the neighborhood, commercial types of businesses. So, I mean, it's not saying that we're wrong.
Right.
It's just that's been the history based on the land pattern and development of this community. Now that we're in this redevelopment mode and we're trying to be more pedestrian friendly and creating a sense of place, it's worth looking at again.
I think we should look at it after all this is all said and done. So part two is the overlay districts that we've been discussing. Can you walk us through that? Where are we in the process of implementing that? What?
The planning commission held its public hearing in December, made a favorable recommendation. And it will be coming back before city council in February for a study session and hopefully adoption. The overlay development district is only specific to Telegraph Road corridor, the city center district and the downtown development authority. And that gives a greater flexibility of standards for higher design and more pedestrian and environmental amenities. For example, this site would not qualify under the way the overlay district. And the reason the city center and the D D A have been designated is because those are our highest density, most walkable type of districts. And the Telegraph Road corridor is unique in itself because of the research and technology that currently exists with the auto. So that's why we have initially chose those three districts.
Is there a vision to have the whole city have that as an option? Or you wanted to start there?
We wanted to start as a test case because it made most sense there. Now, there are other types of tools that are available, like the plan unit development, which the council considered years ago. There's still the consent or conditional zoning that could apply throughout the city. But the overlay district is a little bit different. And it's specific to the area it's an umbrella to.
That's all for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Friger.
Yeah, just a clarification. Are we talking only the St. Beat property area now or are we talking about the St. Beat and Funeral Home?
The Funeral Home is actually being discussed tonight. But we're focusing on the St. Beat property, although if it's a related issue, if we try to answer it.
There's a little piece of flat fourteen on the Funeral Home that is really a St. Beat property?
Right, this little piece here. And that is, I think there's a purchase option by the Southfield Funeral Home to purchase just that sliver and incorporate it into their rezoning.
Okay, because I didn't read that anyplace. It just looks like they are two-piece.
That's our two-piece, yeah.
Yes, and it looks like we're going to give an offer to rezone that. They are two-piece for the Funeral Home, but it's really a St. Beat property. So how do you do that?
Well, I believe their joint, their applicant has given permission for that parcel.
Is that just like a check against agreement?
Well, it's in the documentation that we have as far as application and the survey.
And for clarification, that was from St. Beat Archdiocese? So that parcel?
I'll have to, I don't know if there's somebody.
It would have to be the owner of the.
The owner has to.
Well, does that have a great certificate?
Yeah, well, I didn't read any part of it. All I saw was what the outcome was and I wondered how to do that. But if there's a, an agreement to purchase that by the.
That's my understanding, this is a separate agreement for just that piece.
Okay, so that would square off.
That would square off that parcel.
Okay. One of the things that troubles me about this whole thing, about the rezoning of the St. Beat property, is I would have liked to have seen some more airspace between the rezoning and the site plan. It's rezoned, the site plan right behind it. They're so apparently connected that I think the public is saying that the rezoning automatically makes the site plan happen. And it would have been, I think, clearer for everyone if the rezoning had taken place. And then sometime later, a site plan had come in that we could have dealt with where we don't have to deal with both of them at the same time.
If I could at least answer that?
Sure.
It was the applicant's desire to bring these both forward concurrently. And that's consistent with other dual applications for rezoning and site plan. Secondly, as Mr. Council President Cyberg had indicated, there was an article that was leaked in December of two thousand and eleven that Walmart was considering the site. And I said to myself that had we, had the applicant, who didn't officially submit until September, tried to rezone this on its own, knowing that Walmart was out there, council be saying, what about the Walmart site plan? But it was purely the applicant's desire to bring these both forward concurrently. We have, if you recall, the former Kmart shopping center on Eight Mile. We have brought forth the rezoning to try to spur redevelopment along Eight Mile that was independent of any site plan or any use. And in some cases, had the Archdiocese come in two years ago to try to spur sale of this property redevelopment, we might have looked at this on its own merits. But again, after the cat was out of the bag, after the applicant decided that they wanted to move this thing concurrently, we just, we processed them concurrently.
Yeah, well, and my direction for the questioning is, it would have been much easier had the Archdiocese come in and said, you know, this property sitting here, we're trying to make the best use of it. We, you know, we don't need it anymore. Can you help us in doing the rezoning and then independently of anything else?
And I understand that in the past, there have been some very preliminary conceptual claims of how to redevelop this, but it never went forward any further than that.
Right, yeah. When the previous planner was here, we did have some plans about using this piece of property. But my primary question was about that piece of property on that B two or R two. Thank you.
Any other questions from council on rezoning issues? All right then, Mr. Crowe, go proceed with the, item nine on our, you may the whole agenda, and then that is the proposed Walmart site plan.
Okay, thank you, Council President. To my right here is the proposed layout with Southfield running north-south and Twelve Mile Road running east-west. Just to help with my review of all the issues, I prepared a brief chart that I could announce at the order, and if I could, I'd like to go through that chart. And then I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. We do have representatives from Walmart here. Any questions that I can't answer, they'll be happy to try to respond to. The first issue is architecture and building. The building is to be constructed in accordance with the submitted elevations. Building elevations have received significant upgrades from the original submetal. They have gone through several iterations with the planning department. And these upgrades include architectural embellishments, cornice details, shawl lines, windows and awnings, increased color palette, upgraded building materials, ornamental fencing, et cetera. So typical with a lot of national retailers, they usually come in with, I guess, what we call a Plan C, which is their basic plan that they hope that the community will consider. And we were able to get several upgrades to all four elevations throughout our process. With regards to deliveries, and a lot of these issues are already governed by either zoning ordinance or city code. And we refer to the sections that are specific. But generally, delivery hours for general merchandise typically take place between eight AM to four PM. That is for their large trucks that bring in general merchandise, and I believe for about two times a week. But as early as five AM for food items, deliveries will be located in the rear of the building and screened by brick screen walls, eight-foot-high earth berms planted with eight-foot-tall evergreen trees and number five persidia shrubs. So all of their deliveries will happen in the rear for the southern elevation of the building. And they will be screened by screening walls, a truck well, and an eight-foot-high berm with eight-foot-high evergreens and then interspersed with persidia, which is a more wild-growing shrub that fills in the empty spaces. During the process, the planning commission asked about the demolition of the existing St. Beat's church. And we know that there is a significant copper roof and other elements and trying to be more sustainable. Policy of the planning commission is asked, were feasible to recycle as many of the building materials as possible? And they've agreed to do that. Now, Councilman Moss asked about some of the differences with dimensional requirements. But specifically, B three general business requires a building height of twenty-five feet. And they have an average building height around the building of twenty-five feet. It's slightly higher or slightly lower depending on parapets and so forth. But the way we've figured the average grade meets them. They are proposing a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-three square foot floor area, which is, my understanding, back in the day, these supercentres used to come in around two hundred thousand square feet. They've slightly reduced their footprint to about a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. They are proposing the smallest version of their supercenter with the largest portion of groceries, which I think was about twenty-eight thousand square feet. The floor area equates to about twenty-six percent building coverage. Now, someone had asked me to compare this to the existing Myers on Telegraph and Twelve Mile, which is about a hundred and ninety-five thousand square feet. The Home Depot up the road, which is about a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. And the Target, which is about a hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet. They do mean all of the setback requirements for front, side and rear. And their open space required is fifteen thousand square feet and they're providing twenty-two thousand square feet plus some change. Landscaping, they exceed the landscaping requirements. We have a number of standards that would require them to execute as far as maintenance, stormwater retention and irrigation. We are promoting low-impact design wherever possible. But basically, their landscaping is consistent with our ordinance and they exceed it in many cases. Earlier, I talked about engineering. An underground detention basin will be installed under the paved parking lot. Existing utilities adjacent to the site can handle the anticipated capacity of the proposed development. Any environmental features on the site, there's really, this is an urban, pre-existing developed site, so there are no significant environmental features on the site. There are no weapons on the site. Lighting, all exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage or glare onto adjacent properties. They have provided a photometric plan that does verify this. A couple miscellaneous items that came up at our previous review. Council asked about firearm sales and they've responded that Walmart will not engage in the selling of firearms at this location. With regards to hours of operation, they initially came in for twenty-four hours, seven days a week, based on the lengthy public input process of the planning commission. And to mitigate concerns about noise, safety, lighting, traffic late at night, the planning commission has recommended that the hours of operation be limited to six AM to midnight, excluding Black Friday where the store will be open twenty-four hours just on that one day. And Walmart has agreed to those conditions. Noise, store hours will be limited. Screening walls and landscaping will be installed to minimize noise issues and are subject to the city's noise control ordinance. If this were to go forward, the petitioners submit a lot split and lot combination application to the Southfield assessing department for the dividing and combining of land associated with this proposal. With regards to parking, one space is required for every hundred and fifty square feet of usable floor area. Thus, on the Walmart site itself, six hundred and eighty-three spaces are required and they only can accommodate six hundred and twenty-three. If all three sites, including the Southfield Funeral Home, the Walmart and the shopping center to the north, are looked at together, which we typically like to do, nine hundred and ninety-three are required, nine hundred and twenty-one are proposed. Therefore, a waiver of approximately seventy-two parking spaces from the zoning board of appeals would be required for all three properties. There's been talk about future bank partners to reduce impervious service. And they've agreed to install electrical vehicle charging stations. agreed to install electrical vehicle charging stations. However, they are short on parking, and there are a lot of different ways to try to deal with that. Pedestrian amenities, they're proposing to install at least two bike racks in accordance with our bike parking ordinance. Existing bus stops on West Twelve Mile Road and on Southfield Road shall be equipped with a new smart bus shelter prototype and key walks linking the curb and the bus stops to the public sidewalk system. There was a recommendation from the planning commission that a pedestrian crosswalk be added to the northern, northerly shopping center, an interior sidewalk system to connect to the public system. So there's acknowledgement that some of this parking would be shared, and that people would be walking both north and south, and we tried to accommodate those conditions. Also, there's a current eight-foot-wide asphalt bike path along Twelve Mile for the southern elevation, which is in various degrees of repair. We're requiring them to replace and repair the entire eight-foot-wide bike, bike safety path on Twelve Mile. There are currently nailed sidewalks from Southfield, along Southfield Road from Twelve Mile to the entrance here on Crossroad and Edward Street, and we would require them at a minimum to put a five-foot sidewalk in. Based on the anticipated pedestrian traffic in the area, we would ask the council, if they're favorable, to require at least a six-foot-wide sidewalk. And we talked about, Councilman Fracassi has talked in the past about gateway features. We've incorporated a pedestrian plaza with wrought iron fencing, landscaping, benches, trash receptacle, that meets our clear vision zone, which could be duplicated on the other side in the future, if agreed to them. There was a question during public hearings regarding roding control, and the city does have an ordinance dealing with pest control, but they have an internal trash compactor system that connects to the building itself, so none of their employees will be actually walking outside and dumping trash. With regards to right wing, they've agreed to dedicate approximately forty feet of right wing on the west side of Southfield Road, and they've been working closely with the road commission of Oakland coming. The issue of safety has come up in the past. The petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. But more than that, based on our December tenth council presentation, we've directed them to work closely with police departments. They've been in contact with Officer Buckberry and the police chief, who have reviewed their proposed security plan and find it acceptable, consistent with other large, big-box retailers in northern part of the city, and have agreed to work closely their asset protection people with the Southfield Police Department and undergo their re-recommended training. With regards to fire, the petitioner will have to comply with any fire prevention requirements. Screening, currently, there's, I believe, a fence that's located adjacent to most of the residents here on the western part of the property that, that translates into about a six-foot old brick screening wall, it's brick and printed, street screening wall behind the existing shopping center. That'll all be removed, and an eight-foot-high decorative masonry wall will be constructed where the non-residential property busts the residential property to the south, as I stated, an eight-foot-high earth burn planted with eight-foot-high evergreen trees and shrubs will be installed along Twelve Mile Road. And then, all of this parking lot located on the eastern part of the parking lot will have wrought iron or ornamental fence with brick piers installed to screen, screen on the parking. Signs is something that we don't typically deal with. It's site plan review, and it's governed by the city's sign ordinance. However, they originally proposed to put a thirty-foot-high pole sign on the entrance here and one up here. Based on comment from the public, they've agreed to reduce that down to an eight-foot ground sign. They're still proposing a thirty-foot-high sign up to the north. We've, we've talked extensively regarding traffic and circulation. We can get into that if the council desires. And then lastly, with regards to trash, as I previously stated, closed compactor and recycling program will be utilized. Trash and recycling pickup shall be limited to the hours of seven AM and six PM for the Southfield City Code. So I'd just give you a brief overview of all the, what I call legitimate site plan issues that we've tried to address, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. If I can't answer those questions, I know there are representatives of Walmart here to try to answer council's questions.
Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I have a few questions, in particular to the site plan. When we had our meeting, I think it was December third, one of the questions that I asked is why is this being proposed at Northland? I think some residents were wondering, you know, why not there? Among the answers that city gave, in addition to Northland not necessarily being redeveloped already, Walmart representatives said that they don't have a national model for a three-story Walmart per se, which is, you know, that's where the empty penny store is. So I, I was curious, because that kind of sparked something in my mind. I was wondering, maybe Eric Hinks can answer this, or someone else. What are the general models that Walmart has from biggest to smallest, and where does this fit in on that scale? From literally the smallest type of store that you have to, you know, some stuff that we see along the highway?
Name an address for the representative.
President, Eric Hinks from Walmart Public Affairs, too, at North Capital Avenue in Lansing, Michigan. There are three primary stores that we utilize as we service our customers. The one is Kroger, the other two that we're discussing here is the Super Center format. That's typically one hundred and eighty-four thousand square foot establishment on a general basis. It's technically a little bit larger than that, two hundred. The one proposed for the site plan is basically the smallest, if you will, of those formats, at one hundred and thirty-two thousand. And that's the primary way to service our customers. Now nationally, there are two other formats that Walmart utilizes. One is the neighborhood market format. It's basically just a small grocery store format, and the other is a Walmart Express, and you'll typically find those Walmart Expresses in the more high-density, urban, high-rise setting, like it was in Chicago, Los Angeles, New York City, those types of downtown heart or urban centers, where frankly, the idea of building a two-hundred-thousand-square-foot complex is very difficult based on existing property.
How large is that, how the Walmart Express?
The Walmart Express format is, is much smaller, and Terry, excuse me, as Kroger discussed earlier, says that from, think of like the size of a, you would see with the Southern Landman or CBS or by eight, or those types of smaller.
Ten thousand?
Ten thousand square feet go in, like you said, you know, soda fountains, milk, bread, smaller direct, you know, more mom and pop size stores that you have. Again, and typically, high-density. We have a similar area in Chicago recently. And like I said, the middle-sized one is the neighborhood market format. Again, that's more of a grocery store component. We do not have any of those other formats that have been brought out in, in Great Lakes Division, which is both Michigan and Ohio. The most recent one of the neighborhoods that was opened, I believe, is services a lot of our home office employees and residents in the back of the Rogers, Arkansas area. Very nice format, but we have no plans from the business model right now to roll those out, neither in Michigan nor Ohio.
So jumping off of what you just said, you know, I think one of the genesis of why we are talking about this development, because I think it's been said several times, there's a grocery need in that area, maybe a grocery need in that neighborhood. And I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with that, per se. I know there's Kroger, but, you know, the farmer Jeff went out. So why, why didn't you choose to have the neighborhood market or the Walmart Express and possibly go for a B1 rather than have such a large footprint and an intensive development that made it the B3 request?
Based on traffic, population density, median household income, neighboring retail establishments, the master plan for the corridor is our assessment from the business model that the larger format was the one that would service our customers the best.
Okay. Let, later question, last question. I know that we talked about the ban on sale of firearms. Is there a ban on sale or not going to sell ammunition at this site as well?
We don't, we didn't put that request in. It certainly is something I can add to. We were typically hoping to sell a firearm.
Yeah, yeah. I think ammunition should be added to that.
I'm sure Philly would. Again, that's not a specific question that I asked, and I am happy to provide that to the council.
Okay.
Other question? Mr. Fraser?
You said something. One of the major concerns I have, and I've expressed it at the last meeting, is traffic. And I know the road commission came down and said they're going to put new traffic signal, and it would lift turn lanes and all that. To me, that really doesn't seem to address the problem. And my question is, we're, the city of Southfield is going to be stuck with whatever the outcome is if this gets, if this gets approved as far as traffic is concerned. But I have a strong belief that we'll be partners in this thing. Walmart ought not to come in and reap all the benefits, and Southfield has to tick off the progress. Would Walmart be willing to put up a performance, well, not performance, but what would be performance bond that would cover any deterioration of the traffic that, that we don't, that we don't anticipate, some of us anticipate, so that would help relieve the, the traffic in the event that the traffic does get worse than the five percent that you're talking about, and the road commission says, even if we improve it by ten percent, you're not going to notice it?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know that we have or have not frankly engaged in a, in a performance bond based on traffic that's been generated from a retail location. I'm certainly happy to ask a question upon what the direct answer to that is.
Sure.
My understanding, again, is what we've offered to, particularly to the road, to the road commission, is to improve the traffic signalization at the two locations that we can physically control. I know there was a question that was asked specifically of us regarding additional left turn lanes. And my understanding that the problem there, particularly from the road commission's side, is we control, as you can see from the proposed going behind you, we would, we control that space on, for the southern border of our, of the proposed profit, Saint Beach Church. So we could certainly add in that additional left turn lane there, and the variance for that that would be required from the physical road itself. The problem is, I understand, is that our neighbors to the east of Southfield Road along Twelve Mile, I believe at the gas station there, that's Mark's Factory, and then some other real estate, retail that's, owes there, they don't have the space there. So what you would find is, we could add a left turn lane in on the west side of the road, but then the east-westbound traffic wouldn't line up appropriately with the westbound lanes. It's, we should have it in one lane, if you will, but the north. There'd be no way for that to line up without physically purchasing that, those, those properties and then moving that back. And we, we don't own those properties, we don't have to buy those properties. So that was my understanding of the problem of adding an additional left turn lane. And then also with the, the future plans for the Southfield Road, we're doing everything that we can on our site to hold it so that if and when the county road commission works generating the Boulevard, the east traffic from everyone through, the variance is there, the space is there, then you come right through to have the dark plant. And those are the only things that we've been able to do. What I can tell you is I do know existing traffic is not good. I've driven through it, our entire team is more than aware of where it meets. We think that's why the traffic study we provided was exactly accurate. It shows exactly where it is. We also know what we've been generating. And as I mentioned to Councilwoman Tino when she asked the question in December, we've got approximately seventy thousand vehicles going through that interchange on a daily basis. Our average store does four thousand transactions on a daily basis. That's about three, four percent if every single transaction relates to a bid. We think with the left turn, excuse me, with the right turn additions, that traffic at the intersection improves regardless of the additional traffic we generate. And that's also part of our site plan, was to move our impacts far away from the physical intersection as we could. If anybody's southbound coming to our location would not go into that intersection, it would turn a bad effort. And anybody eastbound off of Twelve Mile would make the left-hand turn in. So that avoids diverting as much physical traffic we would be generating from that intersection.
I understand what you're saying is, like, what all of the rhetoric out there is.
But I will ask you a question off the top, I'm just not familiar with, we, I don't know that we've ever done that. I don't know if we have done it. I honestly don't know, and it's an easy answer to get.
The other piece then that ties right in with that, and that is, part of the marketing that I've heard is that when Walmart comes in, it attracts other businesses. Well, without attracting any other business, you're already short, the, the complex, I'm not saying just Walmart, the complex is short parking spaces that have to be, that have to go through the zoning board of appeals. That shopping center, the whole shopping center is, is pretty dog-eared and doesn't attract a lot of, a lot of traffic, even though there are parking spaces there. If you attract other businesses and on the north side of that, because you're going to have the, you're going to have south half, but you're, that if it spruces up the north half of businesses, then it's going to add to the traffic from, but it's also going to add to the parking ground. So they're interrelated, the traffic going through that intersection, going into the complex, and finding parking spaces along with the funeral home, I see is going to be an additional problem. Not maybe immediately with ribbon cutting, but very shortly after, if some other businesses decide, well, the traffic is already here, why don't I build a art shop? Why don't I build a, you know, something else that brings more traffic in? It would be going to Walmart, but would be going, so again, it's going to compete for parking spaces. So I, that's why I came up with the idea of, of a bond to help relieve traffic in some way. Maybe it's just even speed up the, the Boulevard of the, use that money to help speed up the Boulevard to relieve the traffic. But what I don't want to do is have a vote that approves the Walmart, and then we get stuck with, with an impossible situation as far as traffic is concerned.
Mr. Chairman, council's question specifically for our party, from the formula that we use as a corporation.
Yes.
We're well within our numbers that we would put on the table, just again, by what we see from our customers and our square footage. The city's ordinance is a much different standard than what we have, and Robert, I forget the actual number, but.
Six point six per thousand?
Six point six per thousand, and we would look at more like.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, four point five. So from our perspective, again, in our effort to service our customers, this site as proposed will be overparked. There, we will have more parking spaces available for our customers than we would utilize. But that's our internal formula. Your formula's more stringent, and that's why the three properties are put together with the variance required, and as I said, I think others have mentioned, there's existing variance that's here to the, to the council's point. If that additional growth in the, the B1 complex comes, as everyone anticipates, again, from our formula, we would have more than enough parking to accommodate the, the additional parking that they would require as a result of enhanced business.
Okay, so let me, let me get this clear. By your formula, what you're saying is that your customers, if you were a standalone, use your formula, that customers wouldn't have a problem finding parking in your parking lot, other than, I would say, the Black Friday, or some, or some that, where you have a blow-off sale. other than, I would say, the Black Friday or some, or some that, where you have a blow-off sale.
Exactly.
So you think that
From our formula that we use by your statement, we've got more than enough parking for our customers. More than enough.
Okay.
But again, our formula is not nearly as stringent.
I understand, I understand. So I guess by my mind, what you're saying is, is really going to be overparked by using our formula? Even with
Problem.
With the, the large funeral.
If I was, I wasn't done on offer, but I'm going to say it. If, if the funeral home has a, one of those, you know, the matriarch of the community type of thing that coincides with Black Friday and also happens to coincide with
Everybody wants a watch.
Everybody, yeah, going to get a watch just to watch it. And we could probably have a parking problem in that specific area.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Anyone else? I think Sylvia has a question. Um, you are next.
Sure, I have a few questions. I'm not going with the traffic for just a few minutes.
Would you like?
Robert?
You have a document included, but we're committed to it. It has a projected vehicle generation table. Can you sort of explain this to me in terms of just how many cars faced upon a 30, 130,000 square feet Walmart generated within a few days, basically, from the document you have there?
And my name is Robert Matten, Councilwoman Christie, SO 8164, Executive Court, Lansing, Michigan. Thank you for the question. The trip generation table, what we do is we follow a set of national standards from the ITE Institute Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. That manual is used by every traffic engineer. It is a, a set of, they may go out and compile or count thousands of different developments and they put all of that development together and come up with the average rates. Specifically, the category used for the Walmart Supercenter, I believe, offhand is category 813, Eastern Supercenter. That is specific to Walmart. That was recently updated from the Texas Transportation Institute who went out and actually counted four or 500 Walmart stores and throughout the country and came up with those rates. So that's a good representative sample of not stores only in the Midwest, but stores southeast or out west. So that is a national guideline that's used. So for our store, we took the square foot, or foot and applied it to the, the average rate or the formula, whichever one gave a higher volume. And that is the trip generation for the proposed site.
So looking at this chart, you know, if the code is correct, the 813 scan line and the square footage, we're only looking at the additional cars going across or are you going to total all the numbers that it gives?
Well, I think what you're seeing in the, in the trip generation table, there's an AM, a midday and a PM.
Yeah.
We were told by the city of South DOTA and the road commission to look at those three time periods. So in the AM, you can see the trips are much lower than, say, the PM. And mainly because obviously a Walmart development at 7:00 AM in the morning would not generate as many trips, let's say, pass-by trips even as during a weekday PM peak hour where you might be going home from work and decide to stop at the store.
And if I'm trying to understand, you have 4,000 transactions a day. So that's an average, maybe one car per transaction or two cars per transaction. Those don't line up because it seems that there's, there's going to be more numbers spread out.
Well, and that, that 4,000 transaction area was done about, obviously, that, that's kind of an average Walmart transaction. The, the numbers, the 4,000, that, if you're going in, that 4,000 would also come out. Again, we use the ITE Trip Generation Manual and hit the ATE in, but it was what around 4? Is it close to 4,000?
If you can come up with that.
Is that 2950 in and 2950 out?
That's the total number of cars during that time.
2,950 inbound vehicles. Of course, those inbound vehicles would then all help as well.
So basically, when you're not including the times that are here, those inbound and outbound would be sandwiched in between these times?
That, that's correct. Okay, that's correct. That, that 2950, that's over a 24-hour period. Obviously, with it only being open 18 hours now, that number may reduce even more. But the AM, midday and PM peak hours in that chart aren't included in the 2,950 volume.
And I guess what I'm reading is that basically the numbers would stretch across a greater timeframe and will still have approximately 200-300 cars that's going to be traveling to the Walmart to get to the final number.
Yeah, on average, it probably has, you know, close to 200 vehicles, you know, in and out during, during a typical peak hour or somewhere around that, that number.
But I'm looking at in between the peak hours, let it have a large number of cars as well.
Yeah, that's correct. And in this period, you had two and a fourth, you know, there's as many as 25-26% pass-by trips. And those are trips that come straight off of the existing street network. Those are not new generated trips, but they're trips that are taken right off of Southfield Road to Almont Road. And again, that's right from the ITE Trip Generation Manual.
Okay, and in addition to the traffic during the same time from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, you're going to have the delivery of merchandise with the large 18-mu truck coming in.
That's correct. And then a couple of vehicles a day, I think a few times a week.
In addition, you're going to have the trash pick up as well during that 8 o'clock to 6 o'clock.
And they, they usually pick that up once, once every few days or but it's not, it's frequent, you know, it's, it's frequent enough, but not, it would not constitute several trips.
Yeah, I guess what I'm seeing is that, you know, yes, we're going to have the, the vehicle traffic, but we're also going to have the deliveries, we're going to have the trash pick up and that's also going to impact the traffic that's going to, that's already currently at that, at that.
The, the delivery though would result in, you know, approximately less than 1% to 2% of the overall falling. It would be extremely minimal compared to the, the hit, the hit here or customer traffic that would be generated.
I have a question to answer with your signage. I know that Mr. Prodig indicated that you will do one garden sign, but you still want to do anyway, you can come online on that sign as well. I don't know who can do that.
Go on, please.
My name is Chris Brooks, here, so I'm also at C E S O. On the signage, the, the main sign that came up during the meetings was the sign on 12 Mile Road since that corridor is more to the west, some residential area, that was concerned with you from that side. The sign on Southfield Road, we were planning to leave as the, it's the taller pile sign, more consistent with a lot of signage that's along that road. I believe Target has one, I can't, or Home Depot, I can't remember exactly. There's also the Kenzie Restaurant sign is right there to be a similar sign to that. So the signage on that road, because of kind of the layout of some of the property and how close the cars are to the road and everything, we would want to keep that sign a higher to kind of be aligned with everybody else, have that stability. And because that sign's over on that side, we didn't think it would be an issue with the these room there, since it's away from the, from that side.
Were you basically not interested in lowering it?
I mean, as someone we talked with, we know we have to go through the zoning board of appeals for approval for our signage. And so at this time, we were just kind of, we were just going to leave them actually alone. After the meetings with the residents, we decided to go ahead and go, go ahead and change the one on 12 Mile Road to go ahead and get that to what, to what the residents prefer in that location.
Mr. Councilman, do you have something else?
Yes.
I have another question too.
I'd like to, as Chair, this store would have, according to the statements made, approximately 130,000 square feet. If it was on B3, would, what would be the match that could be built on that property if it was just, say, a commercial strip?
Well, it does meet the dimensional requirements. So the size of the building is really, is dictated by the amount of parking that the site can handle. So we know that the 130,000 square feet on the 11.46 acres is deficient with parking. We've talked before about our standards versus national standards and the idea of less would be better. We would, we would prefer as far as low-end deck design and having perimeter. We'd like to dedicate some of it as green space or future bank parking. But currently, the ordinance requires about a little over six spaces per thousand square feet. And if they can meet the dimension requirements regardless of what proposal it is, the, the potential size of a shopping center or a different type of retail is really dictated on meeting the dimension requirements of the parking. So I would say it's probably 120,000 up to 130, give or take a little bit.
If, if you're going to change in building a shopping strip, would the two drives that present the existence of your road, would they, would that be changed?
Well, I, I could see that, I mean, we evaluated the, there's currently five driveways and just in access management and to help with the flow, the best way is to get those driveways as far away from the intersection as possible to allow for proper stacking. If there was, if this entire 11.46 acre parcel was developed under three or four different retail scenarios, each one of them would want at least one means of ingress, many times two means of ingress. We could, in theory, if this was subdivided into, let's say, five two-acre parcels, we could have as many as 10 cur cuts requested. That doesn't mean that the road commission would grant it. We would try to recommend internal cross-axis treatment. But if this was developed piecemeal, we could have several, several driveways compared to what's, what's there now. So it all really depends on the layouts and the size of the buildings and how many different purpose we have.
I was trying to make a comparison between one shopping center that was making in Greenfield and the one that's probably is driving in Greenfield where there's a Kroger store in there. And, and I would just try and engage the, the amount of traffic that one brings versus the other and, and also a hundred square feet versus the other and also the amount of drives that would have to be provided in, in that mix of, of shopping. The other thing, I don't know who can answer this, I don't know Sue or Jim, maybe Jim. Church of Transfiguration, it pays for the maintenance and up to, up, up to on, on St. Lee's property. The council divided the request and into, to B3 and, and then did not go forward with the shopping centers. For the, for the zone, would the, would the land be zoned commercial and area a larger group on those who are maintaining that property? In other words, taxes would be, would the taxes go up due to change or zone? It would, in ordinary cases, it would. Just wondering, if this is residential zone.
But you would have a vacant site at that point?
Yeah, well, is it vacant, commercial versus vacant residential?
Right, it would be based on the zoning, it's certainly a piece of the assessed value of that property.
I'd actually like to have that answer for Mr. T because, because, you know, I, I like to see zoning and, and site plan tied together to make, to make things more complete. And irrespective of who builds their, whatever business is ideal or business, I would sure like to know what the zoning change, what the tax of all changes would occur. And not put that burden on the church at this particular time. But, I mean, it was, we have 22, 20, 62 mills now in that. That would cripple the individuals who presently own it, are in zoning.
Through the chair, we'll do that research for the assessing department.
Thank you.
Go ahead and then I have a question.
I have a question now with regards to some planning, specifically the site plan. Is there, in your planning opinion, a difference between a big box development at an intersection versus a big box development along a road? Example is, you know, is there, do you find a difference in terms of, you know, the Target up the road versus a Walmart on the intersection?
Well, if, just on the design principles alone, again, we would treat this differently if this was in a downtown development area. We would certainly treat the layout of the building, architecture and so forth differently. If this was in a historic district, we would certainly treat the building and the layout and placement differently. The only difference I would say with regard to big box in the center of a corridor, in a big box on a corner, is we talk about gateways, we talk about focal points, we talk about massing, we talk about pedestrian scale. And, and so it's better in the massing, massing scale to get the building closer to the corner as long as we can meet around corner clients and so forth. Because what this does is it, it places that gateway and massing on the corner and then you've got the building to the north, which is the L-shaped shopping center. It opens that up and they become bookings. So, I mean, it's just basic planning, design principles. Again, we would treat this differently if this was a downtown, we would treat this differently if it was a historic district. But up being on the corner, we would like the massing closer to the corners because it provides scale and it provides that gateway entrance into that corridor.
I guess just in general, I appreciate the work that you're putting into this because you're giving us all the answers that we need to really formulate a decision. And I, I firmly believe you are doing your job and your due diligence in this. On, on the kind of the opposite end, just, you know, what, what are the best reasons to not approve of a P3 and to not approve of the site plan in your professional opinion? You, you've made the case for facts of, of that supported. What are some of the, what are some of the hesitations in your planning experience and profession that would?
Let me rephrase that, at least to say, I'm trying to give you all of the options so you can make an informed decision, whether you approve for it or against it.
Exactly.
And I'm trying to, as a planner, as your professional, address legitimate land use and site planning issues. And, and that's what I try to focus, land use and site planning issues. There's other logical considerations that I'd like to bother to consider. But as far as land use and site land issues, with regards to looking at the various levels of intensity of zoning, it's legitimate to say that the B3 is more auto-dominated, auto-intense. And there may be certain types of uses that are not consistent or compatible with adjacent uses of adjacent neighborhoods, the level of service of, of the traffic and so forth. If this, if this site and this proposed B3 was kind of a mid-block and approached into the interior of residential development, certainly the level of uses and the types of uses that are permitted within the B3 district would have to be weighed very, very closely. So it really comes down to intensive use and whether or not the site is large enough to accommodate the proposed uses. And then on a site plan by site plan basis, we get into the site plan issues with regards to density, setbacks, hogging, all the issues that we talked about. So a proposed fast food restaurant would be looked at slightly different than a big box, which would look different than an office, or which would be looked at differently than multiple families. Each of them, as Robert had indicated, there are standards, the ITE Each of them, as Robert had indicated, there are standards, the ITE Institute Traffic Engineers does these studies. For example, a single family home generates nine point five five trips per day. That accommodates the fact that most people have two cars and they're leaving in the morning and they're coming back, and each one of those trips generates the average of nine point five five. Multiple families have a slightly different average. So we look at standards and we apply them to each specific type of use. If this was a proposed heavy industrial, then there's other types of odor, noise, performance standards that would have to be considered immediately adjacent to residential.
All right, Mr. George.
Are there any building type requirements in any of the B one, B two, B three zoning decisions?
As I've stated, B three has a twenty-five foot height, maximum height requirement. And then depending on how close or how far away from the yard setbacks it could go up or down, there's a floating scale. And I'll have to look for the B one and B two.
Okay.
So they all, they all look like they all have a minimum twenty-five feet maximum height, except that if they can meet the setback requirements, there's a floating scale for B two and B three. So B one has a twenty-five foot height. And then B two and B three, we look at a formula based on how far away they are from the property line. They could go higher in theory.
All right. I'll ask my couple of questions now. They're related to traffic, so I'm not sure who will, not the number of cars, but street design. Maybe Mr. Hank, I'll start with you. He was kind enough to answer some of my questions in the email. Oh, I think the, while we're waiting for that to come back, let me talk first about the Twelve Mile entrance for, the delivery trucks go in that entrance, but patrons do not, right?
Look, the way it's designed.
If I'm coming along on Twelve Mile Road and I'm driving, I'm coming this way, I can come into the site here?
Yes, this entrance is designed for customers to utilize that are traveling east on along Twelve Mile.
All right, if I'm leaving, so I can only go right?
Correct, you can, you can only turn, you can only make the right hand movement to go left, so a left hand movement is prohibited.
How is that going to be prohibited?
It's basically a large, there's going to be a traffic feature there. There's a large curb cut that's designed here, sorry to do it.
It's a diver.
It's a diver, four straps.
Okay, I wasn't aware. Now I can see.
It's right there on the edge there.
All right, then the other question, I've got a bigger part of that. We're going to have something there of a lot of traffic. I think we need two left turn lanes. I don't understand, you've talked about, there's quite a bit of frontage here, and you said, you know, you wouldn't buy the property and it would be too close, but what's wrong with taking some of this property?
Well, again, Mr. President, to that point, if, if we add an additional left turn lane here, that assumes then that the two westbound lanes, correct, on the north side of the road, the westbound lanes, would shift one lane to the north. And so what you would have is, if you're on a westbound direction here along Twelve Mile Road, you're coming in even the far right hand lane, you continue, or I'm sorry, use the inside lane. So you're in the, you got two lanes here, one on the outside closest to these properties. You've got an inside lane, and both lanes go straight through. What the road commission is telling us is that if we add an additional left turn lane here, then this inside westbound lane crosses Southfield Road and enters that same left turn lane.
So really, you need the property down?
Right, so what you really, in order to add an additional left turn lane here, what the road commission says, you have to add an additional left turn lane here, and to accommodate that, these property owners have to give up this property here in order to accommodate that additional lane. So that's all, so that's both sides of the intersection here. Whether you have four lanes, five lanes, or six lanes, all those lanes have to enter.
I'll be the first to admit, I'm not a traffic engineer. But I really thought we were talking about needing more space on Southfield Road as opposed to Twelve Mile, more than your own space.
We think this, again, this green space here that we're dedicating will provide the road commission for future plans to do whatever they intend to do along Southfield Road. At least not, again, on our side, and I'm assuming there's similar situations for property owners on the east side. I don't know that, but.
Okay, that was my two questions. Anybody else? We thank you very much for your answers tonight and the ones you said earlier on Mr. Brooks.
Unless there's any specific questions, we will, if there are any open ended questions, we'll try to get those resolved before appearing in two weeks.
I think we did have a question regarding ammunition. And we have a question, I think, Mr. Fraser from December about the number of employees, I think, has that been answered yet?
Full time versus part time?
Yeah, full time versus part time?
Excuse me, Chair, are you prepared to answer that today or do you need to do some follow up on that? It was an open ended question.
That's a question that I think you all need to address to your legal counsel and then provide that to us, whether they would like us to pursue and answer that question or not. We've been advised that your deliberation on approval or denial of an applicant based on their lawful hiring practices is an issue that you all as an elected body need to talk internally about before officially requesting that from us.
Excuse me, let me ask, what is lawful, and maybe I ask our attorney, if you ask, what's the balance between full time and part time, is that a lawful, illegal, unlawful question?
I'm not sure how relative that is to a land use decision at this point.
Well, if I may interject, one of the reasons that this petitioner has asked us to approve this is that it's going to bring jobs. So I think it's a fair question as to what kind of jobs. And I think, Mr. Fraser, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what you were asking us in December.
It's not whether it's lawful or not to have full time or part time.
So your, your question was related more to the indication that they'd be bringing jobs and you'd like to know what type of jobs they'd be bringing?
Yeah, if I recall, if I recall the conversation, he was saying that we pay X amount of dollars and then, he said, for full time employees. And I said, well, what percentage of your employees are full time employees? Which I thought was not a legal or illegal hiring practice.
No, I would agree. I think to the extent that if the petitioner is not indicating that they want to answer that at this point, you know, I guess that's their option. But I think to the extent that they promoted they will bring jobs to the city, then it's a fair question to ask, you know, what type of jobs will they bring?
Yeah, they open the door, I think.
That's right, that's right.
So, okay. If you could provide that answer.
If I can provide that answer, I will.
Okay. I mean, we understand that part time jobs don't carry benefits necessarily.
Not sure.
Okay, then you need to enlighten us on that.
An hourly employee is eligible for benefits after one year. Part time employees are eligible for benefits after two.
Three year new policy. Well, I'm sorry, I think it's six months and a year, let me help you with that. Nonetheless, we are interested in the number of jobs, whether it be they full time or part time, that if this were to be approved, the store would have.
I'm sorry, I'm taking just to make sure I have that here. Full time associates are eligible to participate in health benefit programs after six months, and part time associates are eligible after one year if they work on average thirty hours or more per week.
Mr. Chair? You know, I know there was a question asked, whether they pay the fees or what, you know, let's be fair, despite all the targets, that's the, I know that they're minimum wage, the whole depot, whole depot that's.
That wasn't the context of the question.
But what I'm trying to say is, is across the board, whether it's the trade field to all these various stores, but they have the tenants paid. And what benefit's big if, you know, with the health system that's coming before this country, you know, these different, people are laying off, and that thing, they're cutting hours, all of it's been thirty hours.
Number of questions I'm going to, I'm going to declare that this meeting is adjourned. We will convene at seven o'clock.